All right, so we'll get started at seven oh three. We'll call to order the March second twenty twenty one full city council. Try and start on time because as I said earlier, we had windstorms last night. I'm sure a lot of people didn't sleep. And we do have a lengthy agenda. So with that, we'll get right into it. I'm Todd McGee, the city council president. This is a Zoom meeting for the full city council meeting for March second twenty twenty one. The first item on the agenda is a community ordinance that was laid on the table to whom was referred. Nor the an effort to enhance food access and security.
Are we gonna do a roll call?
Yeah, I just I'm so sorry. I didn't sleep last night. Yeah, we'll do attendance. See, I'm already tired. Uh, so with that, the clerk will call the roll.
Anderson Burgos. Anderson Burgos. Bartley.
Here.
Here.
Greenie.
Here.
Hernandez.
Here.
Leahy. LeBron Martinez. Lisi.
Here.
McGee. McGivern.
Here.
Murphy.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Tomlin.
Here.
Bacon.
Here.
All right, so we'll try that again. We'll go back to the item laid on the table. Is there any uh motion for this one?
I make the most we take it off the table.
Motion is to take it off the table. It's your second, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
For the post. As I was reading. The community ordinance was referred in order in an effort to enhance food access and security to our residents during uncertain times. They've expedited backyard chicken ordinance as well as review the permitting process for community gardens to ensure uh easy access to such sites. Uh recommended that the order be adopted. Uh under discussion, counselor Lisi.
Uh, thank you. We've been through the hen ordinance a number of times now, um further amending it. I will just go through the basic details so everybody knows what we're voting on. And so this um hen ordinance is going to allow up to six hens. Um they will be allowed to be kept in the following residential zones. It's R one, R one A, R two, and D are up to six unit dwellings. Hens must be kept in hen houses or coops that provide a minimum of three square feet of space for each hen. The coop must be enclosed by a run or enclosed outdoor area that provides a minimum of ten square feet of space per hen. The coop and run setup must be ten feet from any side property fifth. Sorry, tell me if I'm getting this right here with the uh further amendment that was made last time. Fifteen feet from the um rear line and fifteen.
It's fifteen for both.
Fifteen for both. Thank you. Um fifteen from the side, fifteen from the rear, fifty from maybe any neighboring property. Um and a hundred feet from any surface water area. Hens must be kept in a safe and healthy manner as described by the Board of Health Regulations that outline the procedures for food storage, waste management, and cleaning and sanitize the coops. Roosters are expressly prohibited and renters who wish to keep hens must demonstrate in writing that they have permission from the property owner. Um this is all achieved by a special permit of the city council that includes a public hearing and notification of a butters within three hundred feet of the property where chickens would be kept. Um again, we've been through this a number of times. Um, you know, I'm happy to pass something and get things down into the books and work incrementally towards um providing uh more residents with the ability to keep hens on their property. Um I do, you know, I I'm not thrilled with some of the compromises that we made because I do think that it makes it heavily bureaucratic. Um very expensive and the the cost of entry um are very high for a lot of people in our community. Um I would even say they're high for myself. So um uh again, it'll cost roughly um four or five hundred dollars just to begin the process with a hundred dollar um special permit fee, a hundred to two to a hundred dollars worth of advertising. Um and then another hundred dollar recording fee once the permit is granted. So and that's all before we actually get this up off the um ground, meaning before um families could even begin to build and keep a coop with hens on their property. However, um in the name of compromise and and again, in the name of incrementalism, I'll be voting for this tonight. Uh I think a lot of work went into this. Uh I think the Board of Health Regulations in particular are um very strong and outline the state keeping of um hens, both for the animals, for the residents and their neighbors. And um I, you know, I I think we're, I think we're ready to go and I um appreciate the uh the interest in feedback and, you know, the 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 care because I know that everyone who has in some way um altered or amended this um ordinance is doing it from a place of care. And so um even though I may disagree with um some of the directions and decisions that were made along the way, I I I I understand that they're coming from a place of of care. So um thank you for your participation in the process.
Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh so, I mean, I've certainly been involved in a lot of these amendments uh for a variety of reasons. Uh first, the first compromise or the first amendment that I was looking for uh was the special permit by the city council because I think it's very important that we whatever we do, if we're changing something that our neighborhood has a right to be heard. Uh and and so that was one of the things. Uh I also thought if we're gonna do, and we are listing this in the residential downtown, uh that uh it not just be for those that have a lease, but if there are tenants that will, and it's my understanding that there's a lot of tenants that will, that if they can work with their landlord, the landlord is the one that's really saying that it's okay and and that they're responsible. Uh I also look to make the side and the rear setback fifteen feet. Again, trying to make sure, I mean, eight feet is like putting my arms out and it's not very far. I try to make it so that it would be less uh potentially uh causing some concern for for residents. Uh and and the three hundred feet uh in terms of the the permit, all of those kind of things. I I do think we need to do anything like this incrementally. Well, at the, at this point, some people not get it. Uh, I'm sure that's the case. I would also make uh this plea to people who might be considering doing it. Please, before you ever go and try to file a special permit, go talk to your neighbors because I can tell you as one counselor, if your neighbors are opposed to you doing this, I would not go for it. And I, my speculation is that is one of the things. I mean, I would expect there are some places where there'll be no concern. People will say that is fine. And 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 that is also good. Uh and in those neighborhoods, then filing for the permit uh long term, maybe for the first year, it might seem expensive, but from everything I've heard, if you're doing it for two or three or four years, you have more than made up uh the expense of the permit. Uh according to the numbers that I have heard. So again, I I've tried to come to a compromise that I thought for those that were opposed, heard them, for those that were in favor, try to hear them and try to come to something that could work. And and be somewhat limited so that if we do have issues, we can deal with them and not have a major neighborhood disputes. So I'm hoping if we do this, that that's how we'll do it. I know it at the, at the last city council meeting, it was seven to six in favor of this amendment. Uh and and some of the arguments were were that we were amending it too many times. So uh I appreciate the law department putting this back out with all the amendments that we suggested. And uh, you know, I, one way or the other, I think we need to decide on this tonight.
Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um so I'll be giving the minority report from the ordinance committee and I'll be brief. I think we have a perfectly good ordinance on the books for chickens in Holyoke. They are allowed right in the RA zone, which I think is the absolutely appropriate zone for the keeping of chickens. And so therefore, I will not be supporting an expansion at this time. I would support perhaps down the road, the idea of the pilot program that I know at least one other counselor um spoke in supportive to see how it could perhaps work out. But right now, we just have so many basic quality of life issues going on in our city that need to be addressed first from my perspective that I'm gonna stay on the path of if it isn't broken, don't fix it. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy.
Yeah, hi. Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone's doing well tonight. Happy March. Um I'm going to say basically what I've said in the last uh uh five or six, seven meetings that we've discussed this, not to mention the subcommittee meetings. But as Counselor Bacon just pointed out, I've been talking about um exactly what, I think back in two thousand ten, um Mike Plaisance authored a good editorial regarding um uh a trial um that Mr. Tim Carrington wanted to enact. Uh I brought this up multiple times. It's quite frankly, just been ignored, but having a pilot program for twelve months. Um the Board of Health would deputize people from Hoyoke to help uh go out and look at these um uh different areas of where the hens, sorry, the chickens and that um the hens would be allowed. Um I'd also make it affordable, fifty dollar application fee. Um right now, you're, what's happening now, it's 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 too expensive. Um but I would also make sure that um it'd be strongly enforced that uh the hens would be sheltered at night. And also, the most important things about it is making sure that there's a com- compost bin um that is uh authorized by the city and um is is obviously mandatory. Um as as another counselor said, you know, we do have an ordinance on the books already. They are allowed. Um so people that are calling and emailing saying that they're not allowed in the city Hoyoke, now that simply just isn't the case. Um I also spoke in favor of the education for the children, I responsibility. I have also spoken about how it's a good community um aspect and these, the ideal place would be a community garden, I would think. Um uh but, so having said all that, um that's all, I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone further? Seeing no hands.
Mr. President?
Counselor Grady.
Yeah, I will say what I've said in the past. I believe this is an issue that belongs on the ballot. Thank you, so I will not be supporting it.
With that, the motion was to receive and adopt and pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Oh.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion would be to pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you, do you have a question, Council Murphy?
Yeah, this requires nine votes, correct?
You'd need nine votes, correct?
Okay.
No?
Thank you.
Well, you know, it's actually, there's two different pieces of legislation. So, you know, maybe the zoning amendment needs to be separated out from the um ordinance itself for two separate votes. There are two pieces of legal language there.
Just for the clerk, how would you want to take the roll call for this?
Well, there is two separate legal forms. One is an, like, as Counselor Lisi said, a um zone change in to the ordinance and the other one is just an ordinance, so.
President.
Counselor McGivern.
The special permit process is part of the zoning ordinances. They're both part of the zoning ordinance amendments.
Right.
That's what I'd say.
Okay.
So voting on the ordinance.
Right.
If you would like, we can ask Crystal to weigh in. Crystal, is he right, Crystal?
Will we get that clarified, please?
All right. Motion is to suspend the rules, ask legal question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Crystal, are you there?
I am here.
Oh, there you are. So did you hear the question or do you want me to repeat it?
Okay. I mean, there are two separate pieces. Um there's the zoning amendment, which changes the um the the zones, the style of housing that this would be allowed in. Um it's the table, the chart. And then there's also the ordinance piece of changing that, and that falls under section, uh I want to say fourteen off the top of my head, um which is not necessarily um a zoning amendment, but an ordinance change. Chapter fourteen under animals is under our just regular ordinances. But I, I mean, if we don't, they do kind of go hand in hand.
Right, so they're all tied into the new ordinance language. I know what you're saying. And we're voting on it as a package. Correct me if I'm wrong, I've been wrong before. But if that's the case, if we vote on it, how many votes would they need or do you want two separate votes?
They each require different voting uh situations. Just our regular ordinances would be the usual majority and then the zoning would be two thirds.
Okay, does that answer the question, Counsel Murphy?
Well, it just confuses me more. I really thought it was gonna be that I I look at this as a change of our zone and that allows this and it, and because it allows it, we created a special permit in to be get that authorization within that zone. Uh and I'm a little more hesitant now than I was five minutes ago, so.
So Counsel Bacon, then Counsel Lisi.
Thank you. So if we do not change the zoning, then the ordinance has no reason to exist.
Uh Crystal, did you hear that?
I did. I'm I'm pulling them specifically to see how much they really are intertwined. Um there's also another piece that, you know, is missing here, that the Board of Health Regulations are part of the ordinance. So the Board of Health also has to vote on their regulations um to make this go through.
Right, but if the zone does not change, there won't be a special permit or a separate process from what it currently exists.
I'd agree with that. Counselor Lisi, well, while, just so I'm minded, while Crystal is looking that stuff up, Counsel Lisi, then Counsel McGivern.
Uh, thank you. I just want to um, you know, highlight for folks that when we met with the Planning Board in joint hearing on the zone issue, it didn't go much further than the um zoning use chart. And the only thing that we were given a recommendation on from the Planning Board was the zoning use chart. So the rest of the ordinance is really our language and and that's what we hashed out in committee. Um the use chart is what we were given and then amended from the planning board. Um and I would agree, the zoning sort of requires um it requires that we pass the zoning first in order for either the ordinance or the um regulations to have any merit.
Counsel McGivern.
I believe, Mr. President, there was only one order filed requesting that we address this issue. That was all encompassing of both a special permit process, including some additional zones to the to the language itself to allow the hens to exist in certain other zones and what they're allowed to exist in now. We're in part of the vote, I believe, we're we're amending the language that exists and doing everything by special permit, which was part of the agreement itself. That's all linked to zoning. If if we're gonna change that at the last minute, I I I have a big problem with changing the rules. That is not the way, I mean, I only got one legal form, you know, sent back to me.
Correct, that, it's the ordinance that was, a brief reading was given by the the chair.
Which, which is all about the special permit.
Correct.
And the special permit is zoning. It's a zoning special permit. You can't do it any other way. When you look at the use, it has to say by special permit. So the special permit is part of the zoning.
I I agree. That's why I asked, because it was one order, but encompassed two, two different things. Crystal?
Right, so we've now they are together. Um we had to create different legislation because we're changing two different spots, so they are in conjunction with one another. So you would, it it appears you would need the two thirds vote because in order to change that chart in zoning, you would still need two thirds, and that's what gets you away from just having an animal's accessory to dwellings in RA only into also now allowing the coop, hen house and run for keeping of up to six hens. Otherwise, you you revert back to um the, you revert back to the hundred foot from any abutting lot line of residentially used lot in the RA only, basically what the chart says now.
Right.
Sure.
I don't think you can have one without the other. It doesn't appear that way.
So do you want us to just vote on the zoning first?
He's saying it's
Together.
In joint.
Together? Okay, and and it would require a two thirds vote.
Right, because you're trying to amend the zoning part, which needs that two thirds vote, and they have to run to get, they don't necessarily have to run together, but it doesn't make sense not to run them together. So you would still need the two thirds.
All right. So with that, are there any other questions first before I move on? Counsel Murphy, you look like you have a follow up or?
So I just want to make sure. So this, we're voting. If we vote this, it requires nine votes and we are voting both to allow it in those additional zones. And requiring a special permit, three hundred foot, fifteen feet, fifteen feet, fifty, all of that
Correct.
is connected. And it, and it all comes as one vote and it is nine votes.
Correct, that's, that's how I read it. Uh, Crystal, that's how I think you're saying it. And if not, say otherwise. With that, I think the clerk will call the roll. It will require nine votes for passage.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Grady?
No.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
No.
LeBron Martinez? LeBron Martinez?
Sorry, yes, yes, sorry.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
No.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
No.
Eight yays, five nays.
So wait your vote, that does not carry. Off to public comment. I know there's, there's some people online here. I see uh people, I'm assuming for public comment. For those who are new to it, uh please do the raise your hand feature on the uh on the participant portion. I will call you. Um in essence, our rules say ten people. If there are more than ten people, we can always suspend those rules to allow everyone to speak. We ask that you give your full name, address. And in essence, I will do a timer. Our rules require a minute and a half. Uh around the minute mark, I'll just politely say it's a minute and that just to give you a heads up, not trying to be rude or anything. So with that, the first person I see is Andrea Kewart. Am I saying that right? I hopefully I'm not butchering it. Uh you're on on mute currently.
Mr. President, why don't you go to the next one?
Yeah, eh, anyone else? If you don't have the raise your hand feature, raise your hand by the screen. And I'll call, okay, so Scott DeFelice. Scott DeFelice.
I don't know if they listen. Can they hear you?
You guys hear me, right? Everyone can hear me? I mean, they're on mute. I know, if, all right, so Scott, you're on mute.
Okay, I should be unmuted now.
All right, so full name, address, and then we'll start with you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Uh so Scott DeFelice, sixty Cleveland Street in Hoyoke, Mass. So um we're on the eve of opening uh oh the eleven Yale Street MHA facility in a former uh single family home that was formerly a quiet neighborhood in the, in the Highlands. Um this facility will have sixteen patients that turn over every thirty days. Eighteen plus uh employees on site, visitors daily. Food and supplies being delivered, drugs administered on site. Multiple outpatient visits daily per patient. They'll have a bus in the facility, uh emergency service vehicles coming and going. There'll be parking, parking, there'll be traffic issues. There was a high volume sewage line and a water supply of the city's expense installed. Um some multi-million dollar annual enterprise uh in the residential neighborhood. Um and, you know, this can, according to our current zoning, be on every street in this residential neighborhood in the city. Could put three, maybe five. Let's, let's push it out, see if this is really the best model for the business, for the uh, for the city. So I, you know, I think there's really um, there's really one question that you guys gotta ask yourselves is, you know, are you okay with this? Is this your view of the city? Is this how we're gonna build a tax base? Is this in the best interest of safety?
Scott, just let you know, at a minute, just sorry, I guess I'd just let you know.
Is this, is this what we should be doing? If you are okay with it, if this is your vision of the city, stand up, raise your hand, say this is what you like. This is the way, uh and let, let the residents of the city vote. In terms of staying here, investing here, growing here or not. If you're not okay with it, then I'd support uh the proposed amendment of the zoning ordinance that's outlined in item thirty five requiring a public hearing for all future group homes. This is a reasonable approach. Uh no one's saying you can't do it. It's saying that it has to be more than the mayor who has political ambitions and his appointees making these types of decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you for, for that, for being here. Um just looking at the screen and and the names here. And Andrea, are you able to unmute?
Yeah, I'm sorry about, I had technical difficulties before.
No, no worries. Uh just full name, address, and then it'll be off to you.
Um yeah, thank you very much uh for, for um letting me speak. Um, oh, I live at one seventy-three Elm Street in Holyoke. Um
Let's just do it in order. So we're gonna suspend rules, take forty-nine, fifty out of order for discussion first. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Forty-nine from Counsel McGivern. Hereby appropriate seventy thousand from patrolmen to motor vehicles and supplies. Fifty, remove from one thirty patrolman training court incentives, total two hundred thousand, move over to overtime. Those are the two orders. Uh we suspended the rules, allowing the chief to speak. So chief, we'll turn it over to you.
Okay, I'll start with the motor vehicle request for seventy thousand. Um we requested uh seventy thousand for motor vehicle repair. It was cut down to forty thousand and I requested at the beginning sixty thousand. It was cut down to forty-seven for motor vehicle supplies. Uh we have fifty-five cars. Only six of them are two years old and aging quickly. That's our, our line fleet that runs twenty-four hours a day. The other forty-nine cars have somewhere between seventy-five thousand and two hundred thousand miles. So they're basically on life support. Um before somebody says we have a mechanic, yes, we have a mechanic, but that's one guy with fifty-five cars to take after and look after. Some bigger jobs um that 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 we, that take a few days, like a transmission or something, we have to send those out. We can't tie up our one mechanic. Um I mean, I, I think it, I don't really have to say too much more than than that about a fleet of fifty-five cars or that are on life support, most of them, forty-nine of them. Um we're trying to do, do the best we can. So trying to live within, the reason I'm here tonight, I'm trying to live within the budget, within our our budget that you a- a- allowed us for the year. So basically, um we need to move that money over. I have it within my budget to move it over comfortably. Um for these two line items here. And uh I'm at basically a balance of just about zero in both of those accounts, and I have uh some repairs bills and supplies and stuff that I I need to get paid. So so that, as far as motor vehicle, we'll start with that. If you have any questions.
Now, just a reminder to the council, we approved uh that order for if there's transfers between lines, especially for this one in overtime. It's required to come to us for approval. That's why the chief is re- reaching out is because it goes to committee. It's vetting committee. By the time it comes out, they're gonna have an issue of of timing to pay these bills. But this is based on our our new rules for uh making sure we follow the accounting correctly. So that's one of the reasons why the the chief is here to be proactive on it. Any questions with regards to forty-nine? Counselor Bacon?
Oh, I'm, I'm ahead. I'm, I have a question on fifty. Thank you.
Okay, so anyone first on forty-nine? Counselor Leahy, I see you raising your hand.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chief, for coming in today. Um, so the department as a whole has forty-nine vehicles?
Fifty-five, but six of them are, uh, the ones that we leased. And so they're the newest vehicles. Uh, they're the line cars that run twenty-four hours a day in patrol.
And, and so the people at home know, they literally run twenty-four hours a day. So I can't imagine, you know, the oil changes, the brakes, the tires, uh, that sort of thing. Um. What do we have coming up? Uh, I know you're gonna be retiring, so congratulations on that. Um, but what, what do you want to see the police department get in terms of vehicles for next fiscal year?
Well, well, we're putting, uh, together our budget now. We're just working on it today. We're almost done. I, I think, um, for line items, motor vehicle, I think we're looking at asking for ninety thousand for motor vehicle repair, which is, you know, it's, it's gonna be needed every, every bit of that. And I think motor vehicle supplies, do you know where we're at? Somewhere around eighty for motor vehicle supplies, um, each year that goes.
What about purchasing new vehicles? Where are we at?
Yeah, 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 we're, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna put in the six, the, the request for the six new cars every two years that gets divided up. You're, you know, over two years. So we're gonna continue that for the line cars. And this is be, this, the other request for repairs and, and supplies will be, um, the two other line items that we're here talking about tonight, but we are gonna continue that for sure. And hope that.
And a question for you is, uh, I just recently purchased this electric vehicle and, uh, I'm getting a lot of, uh, incredible miles out of it. Um, I know that, uh, big construction companies can't go with electric trucks because, uh, they just don't have the power, the battery power. What is going on throughout the country in regards to, um, uh, electric police vehicles? Are there any? Do people use them?
Yeah, I read an article today, like some, some police department, I forget where, somewhere in the United States has the first fleet of Teslas. We're not there. Um, I think the, the, the reality of it is we're not there yet. Um, I'm not, I don't, I don't know a lot about electric vehicles right now. I don't think they're, um, good for, uh, police and transports and the size of cars we need and cages and everything. I don't think we're there yet. I think we're gonna get there someday, just not in my time.
Okay, uh, once again, uh, thank you very much, Chief. I'm going to support this, but I, I do want to put a record. I'm going to abstain from item number fifty. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome, Chief. Just a couple of questions on the fly. Um, this is going from personnel, I do your budget to expenses, so we do have to adapt it. And in both orders, there's a total of two hundred thousand dollars coming out of patrolmen's, uh, salary line account. Why is there a two hundred thousand dollar surplus in that line account at this time of year?
Yeah, there's a combination of things. Uh, we had some retirements. Um, we have some patrolmen's positions that are paid for by grants. Um, and we have, uh, we had some promotions recently. So running the estimates and the numbers, that's why it's not gonna be like, that's not like that every year. But there's a little bit of a gap this year. Um, so we're trying to live within our budget. Live within our, within our overall budget and do what we need to do to get through the, through the year. So that's where we have a little bit of flexibility there. It'll be the same answer when we get to item fifty-two.
How many retirements have you had?
We have six or so. I think we had six and we have one more coming up.
Okay. Are all the buybacks paid for and accounted for?
Um, all but, um, we, we've managed to move all the money, but, uh, we, we're once again living within our budget. Um, since that line, those buybacks were short. And if Sergeant Hart, Lieutenant Hart, I'm sorry. When he sent you the orders, the only reason we have, uh, two tonight is the third one was, um, for another officer who's about to retire shortly. We're, we're living within and moving money for that too. So you, but you should see that, but, uh, it's not really anything we're taking up tonight, but it, it's, um, I think sixteen thousand. Uh, I'm not sure. What's the total? Well, either way, we're, we're taking care of that. So we, we're, we're not gonna need any more buyout money the rest of the year, if that's answers your question.
And money being transferred into motor vehicle supplies and art motor vehicle, uh, I'm sorry, art motor vehicles. Has any money been transferred out of those line items this year?
No.
Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Bacon, you said for the next question, so unless you change, okay.
Yes.
Anyone, anyone further for item forty-nine? Any other questions? Seeing none, hearing none, motion would be to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Yep, for forty-nine. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for forty-nine, which once again is from patrolmen, seventy thousand to motor vehicle supplies and, uh, vehicles.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Greeny?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes. Yes. Can you hear me? Yes.
Lucy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve forty-nine, fifty was the one for the two hundred thousand from patrolman training court incentives to overtime. Uh, under discussion, Counselor Bacon first.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I would really like to see this go to committee because I want to have a more in-depth discussion about the cost of the overtime and who is doing the overtime given the financial constraints that we have and given that the cost when officers do it is three or four times greater than if our lower expense who, you know, folks, um, on the force do the overtime. So I would like to have a more in-depth discussion about this transfer before we do it, then do it on the floor tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Bartley?
Counselor McGivern is handling the first.
Counselor McGivern?
I, I'm sorry, Counselor Bartley, Mr. President, I just never lowered it.
Back to Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, thank you. I, 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 I too would like to see this go to, uh, I, I will not vote for this tonight, so let, let me just state that for the record. Uh, I, I will, um, I, I, I want to see this go to, uh, committee. Uh, the reason I won't vote for this is because it's taking a line item. Now, I did it for the first one because that seemed like agents circumstances, so I wasn't happy about it. Uh, but, but for this one, I, I, I will not support it. Uh, I will support on the floor, not, not without a, a more in-depth, uh, explanation about the, the, the various cost centers from which this is coming. Who, who's getting the overtime? Why are they getting the overtime? Um, ask a few more questions that I, I haven't even considered yet. I, I, I think a transfer of this sort after we took some, now we took a lot of good votes at, at budget time. And we said when, when free cash got certified, um, I didn't know it'd be another negative four hundred thousand again, or thereabouts. I I was somewhat hopeful we'd do better than that, but, but that's the way it goes in Holyoke these days. But I, I, I hope that we could have some, some transfers from there. Um, though we found out last night, Mr. President, from our outside auditor that transfers from overtime, transfers from free cash overtime are, are not supported by the independent auditor, just, just for, just for your, uh, information.
No, I was on, I was on last night.
Okay. Okay, so you, 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 you were, you're able to hear that firsthand then. Um, but be that as it may, I, I, I would rather just see this go to committee where, where we could digest it instead of having to make such a significant transfer tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Lucy?
Um, thank you. I just want to note that I, I think that the, um, just related to the discussion last night, um, free cash transfers to any operational costs is not supported by, uh, the outside auditor or, um, D O R D L S. Um, but more specifically to this question, um, Chief, I was wondering if the reason why the overtime is allocated the way it is, is, um, due to, uh, the contract itself or if there's other, um, yeah, I, I'd be interested in hearing this evening, um, if the way that overtime is allocated is dictated by the contract or if you have, um, you know, additional leeway.
Okay, I'd like to, um, hear all the counselors and if I could speak at the end, I'll address, I'm sure, all of it, because I do have a lot to say about this. If that's okay.
Well, Counselor Lucy's asking a specific question, so, um, that's how we'll go in order, just so we don't get lost in the shuffle.
Okay, alright, uh, well, it, it, I'm, just so I understand your question, how is it? I can tell you, it, it's, it's contractually, um, it's, it's fair and equitable through both unions. And I know there's some, uh, some of your counselors have been, uh, pretty vocal, uh, with your concerns as to why patrolmen don't want to work and some patrolmen do want to work and why supervisors cover grant shifts or shifts. And, and I get the other, I get the, that the, the patrolmen's hours versus supervisors' hours. And Counselor, Counselor Sullivan says he demands the, the union president from the patrolman come in here and find out why we don't want to work or why patrolmen don't want to work.
Well, you're not gonna, just one thing, Kevin, we're not gonna single out counselors, so let's.
I'm sorry. I thought we could, I thought I could speak freely, but okay.
You are speaking freely, but you're not gonna call out counselors' names. That's just within our rule.
For that, I'm, I wasn't aware of the rules, but, but I've just, I watch all the meetings and I'm very aware. And frankly, some of the stuff I hear is a little insulting to the whole police department. Um, I have, uh, 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 you know, some, some, some things to talk about as far as, uh, might being micromanaged. It's ridiculous, some of the things. You're talking about sending this back to committee so you guys can pick through and, and, and find out who's working, when, where, what. It's like you want to manage the police department. I don't think anybody here is qualified to manage the police department. You're qualified to criticize, which is regularly happens, and I'm a little frustrated and I apologize if I seem that way, but I'm kind of like fed up. I mean, ask me what you want, but be, be prepared for the, for, for an answer. Um, an honest answer. It, it's, it's kind of crazy. I mean, I'm being told, uh, by cer- certain counselors that we need to do old-school policing. Uh, it's while, while I'm at it and I got the floor, I'll just tell you right now, just since this fiscal year, July first, this holy police department responded, holy police department responded to twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-six calls for service. We responded to drug activity calls, a hundred and seventy-five drug arrests that we made, and this is during COVID, by the way. Six hundred and sixty-seven for heroin, cocaine, crack and pills and powdered cocaine. Violent offenses, we responded to seventeen stabbings, shots fired sixty-eight, shootings with injuries, non-fatal, nine. Murders, three since the fiscal year. But if you want to look at the calendar year, we had six murders. Firearms seized and recovered, eighty-nine firearms seized and recovered in the city of Ohio since July first. One of them was an AK-47, one was an AR-15 assault rifle, one was a fully automatic machine gun. We responded to five home invasions, three carjackings. Fifty-three B and E in progress, calls, a hundred and forty-three B and E reports, nine hundred and forty-eight disturbance calls, a hundred and ninety-eight domestic calls, thirty-nine sudden deaths, which require follow-up investigation with the state police, even if it's not suspicious, and our, and our detective bureau. Shoplifting calls, three hundred and sixty-six. Accident calls, including injured and, and fatalities, one thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine. Street stops, patrol and detective initiated, three hundred and twenty-eight. We've kicked, uh, we've, we've did search warrants on apartments or dwellings, nine of them, and body warrants, two hundred and twenty-eight. So forgive me if I seem a little frustrated. When I watch these meetings and I hear that we need to figure out how to get drug dealers off the street, we need to figure out how to get old-time policing stuff back. I mean, uh, you might not read it in the paper every day, but those are the facts. That's the numbers. So it's frustrating. We're out there every day. We're doing a great job. Here's, here's something I want you guys to understand and, and I hope it sinks in. You cannot have a crime problem and a budget surplus. I'll say it again. You cannot, those of us in law enforcement understand it well. You cannot have a crime problem and a budget surplus. And what I mean by that is not spending crazy or everything, everything else, like, like sometimes we get accused of. But the citizens at home, if, if, if I say, okay, I'm gonna give back two hundred thousand dollars to the city, it's like saying, well, it's not worth my effort to put extra patrolmen on the street, to put on bike patrols, to deal with the drugs, to deal with the crime, to deal with the problems that we have. It doesn't make sense. I want to use the money that you guys already gave me within my budget and throw it at our problems areas. Nice weather's coming. We're already starting to feel a hint of it. So you got the, I can already hear some of the, the, the motorcycles, the car drag racers that you guys will be emailing me about and then my phone will be ringing off the hook about. Gangs will be coming out, shootings will be up. It's just a natural part of the, the spring and summer weather. It, it's gonna be busy. The traffic, it's a little faster around parks and playgrounds. All these problems are coming. What I'm asking you to do is not send the two hundred thousand back to the committee, but take it up, ask your questions. If you want to go in depth, let's go in depth tonight. Um, so we don't have to play these games. I, I'm, I'm only living within my budget. This is a new rule that counts, that a certain counselor brought forward and it was voted on. And I asked to come before you, before you voted on the rule as along with the fire chief, and, and you didn't allow that. The problem is, is a rule to move into overtime. Everybody, every manager, every manager of every city department needs the ability to move money around in their budget. That's how we do it. I'm not asking you to take money out of any other fund, or I'm not asking you to give me more than you've already given me. I'm asking you to, to loosen up the crazy red tape and allow me to move money around in my budget so I can give the citizens the protection and, 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 and that they deserve. And they should know that if I have to continue to go back and forth to committee and, and, and play these games and be micromanaged by the council, which is my opinion inappropriate. I mean, not inappropriate in a budget sense, because, but I'm talking about questions about who's working, when and why, and, and, and it's, it's crazy to me. I'm trying to be a professional. I'd like to be treated as a department head as a professional, and it's been frustrating me my entire time as chief. Um, I, I think I do a fairly good job. I, I try to live within my budget and it just keeps wa- you guys keep pulling up walls, red tape, and it's frustrating. Any other questions?
Counselor Lucy, back to you.
Oh, I just wanted to, I mean, from what I hear, it's contractual, so it's not like there's any way that the, um, chief can reallocate the overtime. And that's, that's what I heard him say. So I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly.
Yep, and, and I'll tell you one other thing too, is we, we have some very good, and I respect unions. I, I was a union guy my whole life up until taking this position as chief of just almost three years ago. If I don't allocate fairly, the patrolmen's union president will be all over me and he'd be right. I, we can't tell somebody that they have to work on their day off or criticize them for not want, for wanting to spend time with their family. On the other hand, you can't criticize somebody because you feel they're making too much money because they're working nights and holidays and weekends for whatever, they're filling the gaps. I don't know.
Alright, so Counselor Murphy is next.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Chief, thank you. I'll try, I'll try to be kind here too. Uh, two things, uh, right now, just in terms of your overtime, how much of a balance do you have left?
Right now, we have two hundred and eighty-four thousand and nine point three payrolls to go.
So you have twenty-eight thousand balance?
Two hundred and eighty-four thousand, yep.
Okay, in the overtime.
In the overtime, uh, and, and that gives us roughly about thirty thousand, uh, give or take, per pay period. But I'm telling you right now, if you look at, i- i- in average, we can't do it. We're going into the summer months, we're going into the springtime, hot weather, all the fireworks calls are coming, the drag racer calls are coming. The, the busy, busy season of activity. I'm asking to have that money in there now, probably more than I'll spend, but not much more. So I can, when, when, when the surge events happen that I can't predict, or when it, it gets crazy and all of a sudden they're drag racing all over Balboa and Main Street, I can deal with that. If I need to hire a few guys on overtime on Fridays and Saturday nights to deal with the craziness, that does come naturally. Every hot weather, you know it's coming. I need to move that money ahead of time, so I don't have to go, I gotta go back to committee. I, I have to explain why all this other stuff. So just let me run the police department with the budget you gave me.
Okay, and just, uh, so the report that we just got, you had already spent three hundred and fifty-two thousand, so you, you still have a balance, so you said a hundred and something?
Yes. So. Well, we spent, to date, we spent five hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred. I've already moved in six hundred and ten thousand.
Okay, this, I thought our report was at the end of February and it's listing it overtime is three hundred and fifty-two thousand spent as the end of February. That's not correct?
Yeah, I'm looking at, uh, the numbers that we just looked up today, so it's like to, I'm not sure. I'm not sure what you're looking at.
Uh, we got an audit report and I, I, I'm, I thought the audit report was as of, I'm trying to read it upside down. I'm not reading on computers here, but, uh, I thought it was from at the end of February and, and it was overtime, three hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and five dollars.
In there?
Huh?
In, in the account or spent?
No, spent.
No, we spent more than that. We spent five hundred and seventy-five nine as of today. I, i- if, if Tanya gave you different numbers or the auditor gave you different numbers, you have to. Sometimes there's gaps and confusions, but we go right from the, what Katie spent.
Okay, alright. Alright, thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. The, um, again, this is a request to transfer from, uh, expense line items into personnel line items. I'm sure the chief has good reasons, but in all your reasons, chief, I didn't hear one reason why it's necessary. I'm sure the chief has good reasons, but in all your reasons, chief, I didn't hear one reason why it's necessary to pass it this evening. Make a motion, refer to committee on finance as normal procedure.
Second.
The most motions is to refer to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Yeah, I would have it.
Abstain.
Counselor Leahy will abstain. So fifty will go to finance. We're now back to.
Forty, is forty-six going to finance too?
Joe, you want to send it now?
I thought we took up forty-six, forty-nine and fifty.
We went to forty-nine, fifty first.
Okay.
Counselor Bartley did bring that up though.
Nah, skip it, that's, this is Joe's committee, skip it.
So this, oh, forty-six and stuff we can get to, that's gonna go to finance as well.
Right after forty-five, we can get there.
So, Mr. President?
Counselor Sullivan, was that you?
Yeah, it was.
Sorry, sorry, go ahead.
We, we've got a few people that were here for public comment, I was wondering if we could just take, uh, item number thirty-five out of order.
Motion to suspend the rules to go to item thirty-five, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thirty-five is from Counselor Sullivan. The City of Hoyoka men zoning ordinance, section four point three, capital A, eight and nine point three and other ordinances or regulations. As so, as is to require a special permit prior to granting permission for residential care or rehabilitation, also known as group homes, in all residential districts in the city of Hoyok and no longer allow the use as a right. The special permit is to be used by one of the following boards. And only after a public hearing, city council or planning board or board of appeals refer to ordinance.
Thank you, most for the committee ordinance.
Motion to receive and refer to ordinance, Counselor Sullivan, did you have anything or?
Nope, that's, uh, just wanted to get it out there so that the, uh, people that were here for it.
All right, so thirty-five is to receive and refer to ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, back to item
Three.
Three, which is, we're moving around here. Item three is the minutes of the February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting. Any changes, any?
Motion to receive?
Motion second.
Three, motions received, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Four is from Tanya, the city auditor, which is the general fund and sewer fund report.
Finance.
And a finance.
Finance, send to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? From Counselor McGee, wait, no, this is, um,
Five.
Five is from Tanya as well. This is also going to finance, this is the, uh, grant fund report, so this is to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Five is the residency requirement, um,
I think we all got a copy of that, so receive.
Yeah, motions received, we, we have to file an order for this because, uh, personnel saying that we have a lack of applicants that can work in the city because of residency requirement.
Of course.
Is that a charter issue?
Or is it an ordinance issue?
No, it's an ordinance issue.
Oh, that's an ordinance.
The motion to receive, refer to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those, we have some shortage in, in departments and we need employees, so just, that was the message.
Oh, thank you, I'm adding to that order, by the way.
It's on order, it was, it was, it was a communication, it was supposed to be in order, but it wasn't filed in time correctly, so we'll have to correct that. Seven is a communication from Counselor Bartley, uh, Puerto Rican community in Connecticut, Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, uh, just, just want to make a motion to, to receive this, um, and then just make a quick comment.
A motion is to receive, Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, I, I hope everybody has a chance to, to read it. This is an article that came on a timely fashion, is on the front page of last week's Heart Per current. And it's, it's relative to agenda item thirty B, so we'll, we'll just, I, I just, I just hope everybody just has a chance to, you know, skim it and take a look at it. And when we, when we get to thirty B, we'll go from there. Thank you.
All right, so motion is to receive that one, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eight is from, uh, the OPED director, Aaron Vega. It's to inform us, we got it, so motion is received, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nine is from Alicia Zoller, which is the CDBG proposed material.
To receive, DGNR?
DGNR.
Yeah, just under, under discussion, Mr. President?
Counselor Bartley.
Can can, can you, not at this point, but at a, at a point very soon, before our next meeting, which is gonna be March twenty-ninth, uh, somebody's gotta get us a communication as to how this is gonna go forward. Um, I, I don't know if the, if, if the dean of our body can, can weigh in on this, or somebody's gotta weigh in on it. Because the, the, our, the, the rules are pretty clear as to, as to what happens to CDBG funds. A, a, and, and so it's, it's the mayor, and so, so we've got, we've got other exigent circumstances relative to the mayor on this. So I, I hope we get some, you know, I, I, I want, I want to guess, pick up some kind of an indication from, from you, the council president, as to how you see CDBG funds being ultimately authorized. Is that fair?
Yeah, I, 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 I'm a, I'll give some information at president's report for, for now, for this, nine to DGNR.
Yep.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So that's the ten is a memorandum of understanding between the Hoyok Public Schools and the Hoyok Police Department.
Motion to receive and send to finance?
Motion is receive and send to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eleven is a communication regarding the neighborhood hub project.
Is Stephen refer to public safety?
Second.
For housing over the next.
This one has to go to finance. Finance.
Oh, it is? Okay.
The, the grant's coming out tonight.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so this is for housing, so.
Oh, I thought it was about the program, thanks, okay.
No, no, no worries, no worries. So to finance, all those in favor?
Haven't we already done with that, though? I, I thought all these were part, all of these communications were what we had in finance already, wasn't it?
I, I think they are, Counselor, I'm not sure why it's on the agenda, but the report's coming out of finance tonight for the grant.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Correct, and that'll just go in for storage for next time.
Okay.
That's some information that was requested and, and is there now. Twelve is from Bond Council, which is Senator McNairy, email regarding the bonding of trucks.
Yeah, motion received, copy finance.
Plated in finance for archives.
Motion is to receive, refer to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirteen is from, uh, EMB Natural Ventures, on behalf of Natural Ventures, um, this would be to ordinance, I'm assuming. The annual report for Natural Ventures.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Fourteen is the withdrawal of a zone change at four oh five Ingleside Street.
Motion to receive and send to ordinance?
Second.
Motion is receive and send to ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Fifteen is, uh, let's see, Sean Corin, the senior deputy commissioner of local services regarding ban.
Stephen sent a finance?
This is, okay, this is the one that, um, I had sent over to, yeah, uh, with regards to what the DOR was looking for with regards to the schools. I think we were met, it was mentioned before, but this is something they wanted us to have on the record, so this should go to the joint committee, because they're gonna be taking stuff up for the schools.
With a, should a copy go to finance?
Yeah, a copy to finance and to the joint committee.
Do we have a date yet for the joint committee meeting?
Uh, it can refer to Counselor Barn Martinez, I know they were working with the school, the school members to set that up.
She, she's not here, um, right now, or?
All right, so we'll get that date for you.
There's her, glad.
Sure. Do we have a joint committee yet?
Nope, I sent an email to Jeff, um, Jeff sometime like last week to see if he can help us coordinate because, um, I needed to make sure that Liz can get the word out and see what they can work with us.
Okay, thank you.
We'll have Jeff follow up with, um, right, Counselor Barn Martinez.
We're just saying that the past, um, meeting after we set it up, then some people couldn't do it. And then, then, you know, if, if it's not gonna be a, a, a full committee, we can't do it. So I was waiting for them to tell me what would work for them. It's Irene, I, I seen the email, also the mayor reached out to me, me, myself and Irene to try to coordinate something. So I resent it back today to, um, Jeff. Well, I'll, I'll set it up hopefully by next week, or this, there's no way this week, but next week.
Good.
I'll reach out myself.
No, thank you. So fifteen was to the joint committee, copy to finance, sixteen.
Mr. President, can we take sixteen, seventeen, eighteen as a package and receive?
Motion to suspend the rules to take sixteen, seventeen, eighteen as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Sixteen is the community outreach meeting for the proposed marijuana establishment at twelve Crescent Street. Seventeen is the community outreach meeting for the hybrid house at fifty-five Jackson Street. The virtual community outreach, uh, meeting for a delivery operator at six twenty Boulay Street. So all those to ordinance?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Uh, Mr. President, can we suspend, take nineteen and twenty together as a package, send it to DGR, please?
Motion is to suspend the rules, take nineteen and twenty as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
Nineteen is from the mayor of West Springfield, a communication regarding the, uh, conservation restriction. And then twenty is a minute of meetings for the Whiting Street Reservoir Committee, and both are going to DGNR. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-one is the fire, so that is to receive, that's the fire commissioner minutes, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-two is from Harold and Lois Darcy, Concerned Citizen, it's a letter handwritten from, they're from Southampton. Everyone get a copy of this?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so motion would be to
Receive.
Obviously get a copy.
Ca- hold on, Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, Mr. President, I, I know they're from Southampton, but what, what's the issue on this, on the letter, I'm, I'm
If I may?
Uh, Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. So Southampton Road is confusing because the, the numbers do not go in order in Hoyoke. And then it's additionally confusing because at least in this one example, the numbers on the same road are the same number, but they're in two different towns. So on occasion, and recently, emergency vehicles have gone to the wrong house because of confusion with the same numbers on the same street. Um, I'm, I attempted a number of years ago to address the numbering issue on Southampton Road out of a safety concern. Um, this is a new reason. Um, although on the face of it, it might be easier for Southampton to change the numbers for the Southampton residents, but there is a legitimate concern and issue in Hoyoke also. So I am willing to look into it further and perhaps create an order on the matter. Thank you.
Counselor Bartley.
Just a, a point of order on that, then, so how, how do we do that, Mr. President? How do we change, uh, s- street numbers?
I think it goes through the post office, or?
Yeah, it's a
But, but I thought we, I thought, I thought we said, that's how we set that stuff.
Yeah, I
I think we do, I think
Building, building department.
Probably send it to ordinance and see if there's something that can be done.
Could, could we send it, could we send a copy to the, I, I think I heard the building commissioner, and that, that to me sounds
No.
Pretty right, but can we send, can, can we send this to ordinance maybe and then get a opinion from the building commissioner as to who, who, who does this, so we can, we can straighten out the problem in Ward five? Because that, that doesn't sound like a good thing, to fuck, emergency vehicle go, go, going to the wrong address.
I second the motion.
I think, um, I think the engineer has something to do with it too.
Okay, mo- uh, yeah, okay, then, I, I hear Brenna, can we send a copy to, uh, the city engineer too? And maybe, maybe the ordinance chair could set that up?
All right, so two ordinance with a copy to the building commissioner and city engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President, everybody.
Aye.
All opposed? Petitions.
Mr. President? Mr. President? Yeah, Counselor. Shouldn't, shouldn't a letter be sent to the Southampton Town Council too, so they're aware of what's going on?
But it's, uh, I think it's our, our issue on our side, right, Counselor Bacon?
Well, it, it depends how you look at it. It's a Southampton issue as well. It's their residents of Southampton. It's on both sides.
All right, so how about we handle it on our side, we can always send a report over to Southampton once we're done. We fix our side and then send it over to them, they can fix their side.
Sure, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, twenty-three was a special, um, a petition for a non-conforming structure at fifty Upland.
Motion to send the ordinance?
This, Mr. President, can you just say what that is?
It says for, uh, two family structures, let me read it here, uh, change this property building from a non-con, uh, non-conformant to conforming there. This lot is owned by me, a resident at thirty, thirty-seven Upland. And the garage on fifty Upland is marked as non-conforming. The use for this will be for my personal use as a storage area in a garage for one of my vehicles. Um, that's kind of what they're getting at.
Okay.
I, I hate to say it, but I, I, I think this goes to DGR.
DGR does.
I hate to do it to us, but
to DGNR.
I blame Counselor Lacy for all that, five years ago.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-four?
Uh, twenty-four, twenty-five to ordinance, please?
Second.
So twenty-four, twenty-five, they're somewhat large, give me a second here. Twenty-four, twenty-five, um, twenty-four is petition for cannabis cultivation manufacturing, six Appleton. Twenty-five is for ma- marijuana retail manufacturing at twenty-six Happy Mills Road, both to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Really quick question, um, are these actually petitions or are they applications?
Says petition.
I, I, I see that, but I'm getting, I'm confused because I usually think of them all, all three of them as, uh, applications, but it's fine, I don't think it, it makes a difference at the end of the day.
Yeah, petition, so I'm
That's how they're always in there, marijuana are always in there as petition.
Thank you.
Um, before we get to my boring report, um, there is a gentleman here, uh, uh, from Log Cabin, they have something. Uh, it's eight, almost eight-thirty, Peter's here, Peter Roskovan, should we go and have order to?
Make a, I make a motion to take item thirty-eight out of order?
Second. Motion is to take item thirty-eight out of order, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, committee on DGNR, who was referred a special permit application of the Log Cabin Banquet House for a drive-through facility per section seven point one point six of the Hoyok zoning at, uh, five hundred East Hampton Road. Recommended that the application be approved with the following conditions, that the hours of operations for the drive-through be seven days a week from five AM to ten PM. Two, that one year, uh, from the date of issuance of their statute of occupancy from the proposed drive-through restaurant or sooner in the event of the sufficient, uh, traffic safety issue result from a drive-through, uh, restaurant. As joint, uh, identified by the Hoyok Police Department and Public Works Department, the owner shall come back before the city council review the site operation and traffic flow, uh, associated with the site. Should document problems exist, the owner shall identify implementing measures to mitigate such concerns subject to approval of the Department of Public Works and Planning. Uh, three, that all relevant portions of the December third, twenty twenty letter from the planning board pertaining to the special permit application for the drive-through be considered and addressed. Uh, motion would be receive and adopt the committee report under discussion, Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, thanks for the heads up, um.
You ready, Dave? Go ahead.
Hey, uh,
I was reading.
You got it, you You got it, you got it, Dave.
Okay, uh motion to um receive the committee report, adopt the current committee report and grant the grant the special permit for the drive-through. Under discussion. We had um and and my apologies first to the committee for, I thought it was gonna be a quick meeting, what a lie. Um so we had a very lengthy discussion with the proponents, it was a public hearing. Um I I I want to say that we had um, we had the franchisee there, he was uh you know, he the they were all great, everybody helped out, the public really pitched in a lot, the committee really pitched in, so there you go. But what we did was we um, that this was a, this was before us and in uh twenty eighteen, I maybe it's twenty nineteen, I'm losing track of time, but we granted this already. And then, of course, nothing happened there, Mister President, and the permit expired. So mass law requires them to come back before us with a renewed permit. And so they had to go through the whole, the whole process again, so uh it, I mean, it's tough for me to it's tough for me to summarize uh summarize all this, but I I'll just basically say that the uh the city engineer felt it was uh it was a much improved uh petition. There are still open questions uh a- about about this, there are, there are certain steps from be- before city boards uh through through which the petitioner must must still navigate, uh specifically site plan review. And then um then they have to go to the the Board of Public Works as well and then so site plan reviews and planning, the Board of Public Works. And I believe in this case, uh but I'll defer to somebody else can, I I thought there was an issue with conservation as well. And I'm going on memory, so that's not great, but uh so let me just tech check my notes, see if I'm if I'm, if I'm missing anything, but i- i- I mean Mr. President, there there are certainly ch- challenges w- with this particular dress because the the way the road rises up from East Hampton a- a- the 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 width, the width of Route one forty one, uh the the turn lanes. Um but y- you know, a- as it's been said to us many times before, you know, we're just there to, we're just there to focus on the drive-through and w- we all know that. But as I have before me and I keep it handy, um you know, nine point three point three conditions on special permits a- allows us a a great deal of, a great deal of latitude and flexibility. Um i- including a line I I neglected to m- mention, which is uh performance guarantees. So 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 we had, w- we had some, you know, a really frank discussion on on in on issues. Yeah, related to the drive-through course and the and the stacking lanes and the turning and turn out and all the rest of that. But we had also a good discussion about, about the impervious service, about uh about litter. Um and I'm sure the committee and other attendees uh can can probably expand upon that that as well, traffic. Um there there are uh the the sanctity of Mount Mount Tom. Uh how important that is uh to 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 the city, uh parking. So yeah, you know, when it was all said and done, after a good hour plus discussion, the the committee um which is, the committee voted to grant the the permit with the, with the conditions listed in the i- in the um uh order be- before you, so uh hopefully that helps and uh I'll leave, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy.
Yeah, thank you. Uh I just want to go on record supporting um uh the petitioners. Uh I granted, there are obstacles and there's a lot of work down the road. Uh whether you're talking about with the Department of Public Works or the uh site plan review. Uh these people um that run um to show up there are first-class people, uh they're pure class. Uh whatever they do, they do perfectly, they don't do anything um uh without giving a hundred percent. Um and I I I only see them doing uh this with, you know, pure class as well, so I definitely go on record. There's a long road ahead, there's gonna be a lot of different uh avenues that they're gonna have to go down there, but nonetheless, I support them. Thank you.
Uh hold on Counselor Gray, Counselor McGivern, then Counselor Grainy.
Thank you, Mister President. Um I will support the uh the permit for a drive-through, we did so in the first go around. It's a, it's a good project, it's uh something that, you know, meets uh s- a consumer need in a, in a couple of areas, both the uh Duncan Donuts, but the Delaney uh, the Delaney part of it also. On what we learned and 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 sadly is natural heritage has stepped in. He has cited some danger in species. It has forced the project to reduce the footprint of the building and to reduce the footprint of the the uh the parking uh parking lot itself as it to what exists now. That means that the queues for the drive-through are gonna be less and it's gonna make it much more difficult to get this project through site plan review. I I was hoping that maybe our uh new state rep or one of our new uh state senators could could address this with nat- natural heritage because it just, it just doesn't make sense. Um snakes are are, you know, gonna find a place to uh to habitat on the mountain as they always have before we even had a city. And to uh to add some, for safety reasons, some additional queues for the drive-through makes a lot more sense to me. When natural heritage is saying the endangered species are the people driving up East Hampton Road. But it's a good project and wish you luck, Peter.
Counselor Grainy.
Yeah, the only, the only thing that uh I was concerned about are the safety issues and we want to make sure that the uh the planning board addresses all those safety issues, uh but I I I will go in support of the project because uh uh it's something that uh the petitioners uh are outstanding, outstanding uh people that uh are 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 very beneficial to the city, so uh just I I go, I'm just concerned about the safety issues and we we I just hope that they're addressed. Thank you.
Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, thank you, Mister President. Um Dave, that was a long meeting, but I think it was well worth it and we learned a lot uh at the meeting. Um uh Rob Levesque really brought up some good points and and what they have to work with um the changes they had in May Day, I think they did a great job with it. Um it's very important to put forward uh the the business partners with uh with the Delaney House and with uh Duncan Donuts. And it was a great discussion, it's um, my concerns are traffic and I'm sure they're gonna have to try to adjust that with the uh site plan review and with the uh the the Public Works Department, but uh very and fa- very much in favor of this project, I think it's gonna work well. And uh with the stipulations in there stating that they're gonna have to look at it a year if there's any issues that I'll have to come back and try to address those issues, so uh I wish them well and um for the drive-through, I'm very much uh uh a- affirmative for this vote. Thank you.
Counselor Lisi.
Thank you. Um one of the things that I mentioned in the committee meeting was that I was very happy that they are working with the existing footprint that they're not building out any further on the lot than what they already have been working with. Um and additionally, I like the condition um to uh reassess the the traffic issues um a year after the um certificate of occupancy has been granted. I think that's a really great way to understand how the traffic flow will work in and out of that site and um, you know, we really codified it in terms of the conditions here. Um so so it's a really great condition that the the owner will be able to um mitigate any of the concerns. Um because I think a lot of the, you know, it's not, it's not attached to this um permit per se in terms of when we're thinking about the the drive-through, but um I think we're going to need to see that the the traffic pattern works once we do approve the the drive-through and that really is in some ways um dependent on on the use and the traffic patterns that arise a- a- around the site. And so I think the year review is is really a great condition, so um kudos to the committee for putting that in there.
Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, just send my my own tape to the other, the committee report, which I I'm I'm glad I could summarize that an hour and three minutes. But you missed all the comedy, Mister President, that that's, that's the fun about, fun part about being in the, in the meeting. Uh uh my 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 support of this is uh goes goes to the uh petitioners, so when when you've got good solid citizens, either residential or corporate um with with a track record of of success and giving back to the city and hiring a lot of people, which we didn't, we didn't talk about. So this is not a massive job creator, but it's still gonna be a job creator, it's gonna be a tax generator, should they get there, it's gonna be I I I think a a win for the um, for the denizens that 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 hike that area, I'm not one of them, but uh but it's, I know so many people that that do. I I I think also, Mister President, the public should know uh what what the designers did was they tried to best to not make it the you know, the usual blaring uh Duncan Donuts uh colors, they they try to blend it in uh with the uh, now we didn't make that a condition, but I mean, that's what they're doing for for other boards. They're trying to blend it in with the uh kind of the surrounding, so so that they, they've heard, they've heard from the public. We heard from the public, in fact, we a a committee, Mister President, we addressed the public's concerns to the petitioner and we got their concerns answered right on spot, um which, which I I I think is um a little bit unusual, but that's, that's a positive. So I'm gonna vote support of this and um I wish some success. Thank you.
Yep. Anyone further? See no hands? Um I'll say thank you to Counselor Bartley and the committee members uh for what happened in that meeting, it was an hour plus, I was on the line. I called in instead of doing it by the computer. When I went to go ask a question was actually Counselor McGivern and Counselor Grainy that started in on the uh the queue as well as the traffic issues, um that can be an issue up there. However, as we have uh all stated, the petitioners are no stranger to us. And due to COVID and everything else that's happened, they've been very proactive in making sure, one, that I was always informed about this product uh project from the very start that we approved the first time to to then this one. And going forward, addressing all our needs in any condition that we try to put in, especially number two, they're all for it in order to make sure that it worked not only for them, but for the residents and the safety. So for me, this is really, you know, a good uh petitioner, a good friend to the city. And it's something that if we can pass and it helps them to help them stay where they are, then that's what we're here for. We're here to make sure the business stays in Hoyo. So with that, um uh I'm on all support of it, but I want to thank the committee for the hours that they keep putting in, I I'm sorry, Dave. Uh many long hours for you, but you guys are doing a great job in DGR. So with that, if there's no further comment, um motion would be to receive, adopt and grant the special permit with the conditions that were read into the record. The clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the special permit. Any questions? No, turn it over to the clerk.
Anderson Bergos. Bartley.
Yes.
Hernandez. Yes. Leahy.
Yes.
LeBron Martinez.
Yes.
Lacy.
Yes.
McGee.
Yes.
McGivern.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Tomlin.
Yes.
Bacon. Yes, unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the special permit with conditions. Back to President's report, kind of a lengthy one. No surprise for, for people that we've heard some news uh as of last Friday, I believe it was, with regards to the mayor. So I'll start with that quickly, uh the mayor and I have been in commu- communication with regards to him being appointed to the town manager of um uh Province Town. Um what I can tell you is that it's ongoing currently. And once we know more, we can inform the council as to what dates are. Just understand that as the mayor um, you know, gets back to us with solid dates and and confirmation, we will uh alert you as to what those dates are. I can assure you that um it is the role of the uh president to then become acting mayor is a job that I will take very serious and during that brief transition period, I'm willing to do that job and I will do that job uh based on what our rules say. With that, let me be as clear as possible. I will not run for mayor. That has been a phone call, emails that have been uh coming in throughout the time, my job is a transitional job. Brief as it is, I'm going to help guide as the mayor moves on and then hand it off to whoever becomes mayor at that time. I will not be a candidate, I can't be any more clear than that. To be clear, we have candidates already that have been up and running. There are candidates in this chamber who are running, so we have a lot of fine candidates, I wish them all luck. Please be reassured, I am not running for mayor. With that said, um Oh, hold on, one thing is I don't have a set time date as to when this transition period will end. Once that becomes more available to me, I can alert you as to when those final dates are. So right now, the mayor is the mayor until he alerts us as to when his departure date will be. And that is uh unfortunately, it's unknown right now because of uh the negotiations that they're in uh w- with his new job. I wish the mayor, as I I said to him, I wish him good luck, I thank him for his years of service to the city of Hoyo. And I think it's an outstanding thing for his future going forward. But with that, we'll have a job to do as the transitional part and that's all I'm gonna be as a transitional person in order to then hand it off. When it comes to the CBG funds, anything else, once we know that official departure date, we can jump on it. So if things have to happen before, we still have to go to the mayor because he is the mayor until of a de- tar- a departure date is given. Counselor Leahy, you had a question?
Asked and answered, thank you.
Alright, so
Mister President.
Counselor Grainy.
Yes, uh uh just a quick question, is the mayor conducting any business now uh for the uh town of Province Town?
No, no, they, he, he hasn't even started the negotiation from my understand with regards to their contract, so he, just to be clear, he's the mayor. Until he gives us a resignation date. Counselor Bacon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mister President. Um I have a point of order. Uh what so, it seems then that any of the orders that were filed related to the special election or a petition to the state would then properly be tabled pending an update on the information you've just discussed, would that be correct?
I, I I would say that that could be correct, I mean, you could pass something tonight and send it to the state, but I seeing how we don't have a sure date, I I, it might be the cart before the horse, as we sometimes say in the council.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Counselor Lisi.
Um thank you and um thank you so much for, you know, clarifying the sort of role that the city council plays in this transition. Um I'm wondering and um I'm not sure if you are uh willing to share at this point, but are you taking in, when you, when you step into the role as um acting mayor, um do you take a leave from your work or do you just come in to sort of um have a light touch on all the procedural um like things that have to happen?
That's something we'll address in the future, as of right now, not having secured dates to go back to give that answer, I, once again, I have to defer to the mayor as to when we can get more solid information to then be able to plan uh on that issue.
Thank you.
Um Counselor Murphy, I think you're next in the queue.
Yeah, I think Crystal wanted, she was, her hand was up.
I'm gonna get to her, I was just going to counselors first.
Okay, just, I mean, I know that Boston hasn't had a change of mayor, obviously they expect to have one, but they don't have a specific date and they did file the legislation and that's already been, as far as I know, it's been approved and I think the governor assigned it, so I would suggest that, you know, we might wanna be in that same situation.
You can, you can do it tonight, I just don't want to say you have to, that's because not having that firm date in hand, I don't want to say you have to do something when yeah, I can't a- you answer that portion right now. Could you approve something? You absolutely could, I can't say you can't.
Okay, and I also want to thank you for stepping up and and accepting what is not gonna be an easy thing to do and obviously with your other job as well. So good luck on that and thank you.
Well, I I will be harassing all of you, it's not like you're getting out of the workload too. Uh uh now, thank you very much, Counselor. Uh with that, Counsel uh as Counselor Murphy has pointed out, uh Crystal from the legal department has raised her hand, can we suspend the rules? Before we go there, I do apologize, Counselor Martinez has her hands up, I want to get counselors first.
Point of order.
Yep.
Yeah, can I just, my question, so what what would be, so the there will be a president assigned by you or?
No, no, so I I'll answer that later, Counselor McGivern.
Point of order, Mister President, this is the president's report, you shouldn't have to enter into a discussion and debate.
Right.
Orders I know are related around in the agenda, but some of the stuff we're talking about, those orders are gonna have to be amended. There's a lot to talk about. Be doing it during the president's report.
I just wanted to give the update because there was a lot of I just wanted to give the update because there was a lot of calls. I understand your 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 point. Uh Crystal Barnes, you had a question. Will we suspend the rules? Allow her to answer a question? Motion. All is in favor. All calls, Crystal. You had your hand up?
Um, I was gonna comment similar to Counselor McGivern, but also to answer um a question. A lot of what we're proposing, which we can discuss later tonight. Um is more of in the event such events would happen. So we could certainly send things to the state, and if nothing ever happens, nothing ever comes of it. Um but I'd like to save that discussion for down the road.
Okay, no. Perfectly clear. So with that, we'll move on to other portions. Like I said, I have a lot of uh we had a lot of meetings. Um Jeff, uh Anderson Burgos has helped us with a a new feature to our webpage. Which is something that this council wished for and wanted, which was posting all. The orders that we file or things that we're taking up on the webpage. Um. Jeff, would you like to just give a a quick? Info about that? I know you you were gonna go live with it tomorrow, tomorrow morning sometime. But I did take a look at it and it's kind of what the council asked for in the interview process of a candidate if they would uh. Put everything on the page. Jeff, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure, yeah. So actually, yeah, I remember mentioning this during my interview and even in some of those one one on one discussions is. Is having a a way for people to 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 track the the status of orders. And so what I did is start with the most. Recent meeting and um, you know, I can show now or just show you one on one later on, but basically it's a page that has. You know, kind of a quick title of each of the orders. What was the status, whether it was referred, whether it was adopted, whatever it was just received, what committee it went to. What date the committee took it up, what the status of that was, if it went to the committee a second time, tabled, whatnot. E- eventually leading to a final full city council status. The date of that and then the very end, you know, just a note section if there's any additional uh parts to it that. You know, should be known. And like I said, I I started with. The most recent city council meeting because it's the one with the kind of the quickest information and then I'm working my way back. So right now I have pages for. Each of the meetings going back to the beginning of the year. And so uh what I might ask is just what you as the body think is appropriate for how back, how far back I go.
All right, so Jeff will launch that tomorrow. Is there a question for? Jeff on that? Counsel Bacon had a question for him or?
Well, uh it's a a comment and a question. Um in terms of how far back we go. I think if there are things that have been refiled, we don't have to go back beyond those. But I would also like to see the prior agendas and minutes of the city council meetings that we used to be able to access. That we're no longer able to access with the new website be restored onto the website if that's possible.
Sure, actually, I I will add that um I have done that with agendas going back the past two years.
Oh, great.
Through the beginning of twenty nineteen and, you know, if if it's the desire of the body, I could go back even further.
Okay, thank you, because it's helpful to be able to go and look up certain things at times.
Absolutely. So yeah, you can find a line where it's got the agenda, the minutes and. The video all kind of in a line. So if you go to the meeting section of the city council page. You'll find it there. And so there's kind of a visual of this year's, and then there are two links right under that for twenty nineteen and twenty twenty.
Oh, excellent. Thank you.
Counsel Leahy, did you have a question for Jeff or?
Oh, I just had a comment. This is an order that I filed some time ago and I was uh in the midst of working with Ryan. Um towards the end of his um uh career with us. So I I'm finally glad to see that this has happened. I know that other cities um have it. I I spoke to um State Rep Vega regarding this a long time ago. I was asking exactly what the what they used at the State House because I wanted to do something similar. So this is a this is an exciting time for all of us. Thank you.
Yep, so when Jeff brought to my attention, I looked at it. It it is really impressive work. But I thought it would be because this council has requested it many times and Counsel Leahy's filed orders. And it was part of the interview process that you would all have a chance to know that was going live tomorrow and not just pop up on you. So. Uh thank you, Jeff, once again for everything and and I I appreciate it. School uh schools update as we all, I think I sent the notice out. Uh Anthony Soto, the acting uh receiver, sent out an invite for a counselor to be on the graduation uh committee. So if anyone wants to volunteer for that, uh just email Anthony Soto or tell me and then I'll let him know. He also emailed today asking that a counselor be part of the financial review for the budget process. So that way, when they're doing the budget and we're doing our budget on this side. Uh if a counselor wants to be a part of that, let me know and I'll get that over to uh Anthony Soto. Um. We did have, I had a meeting with uh Senator Vellis and Jack McCarthy in the DOR. That's why you got that notice on. Uh dealing with the school capacity or the band, as I call it. Uh it was a good discussion as to uh what we were doing. Um in essence, uh looking towards the one school. And they were trying to get more information on whether or not we could use the older plans and everything else. Um the main thing that came out was the ability to do that band and that would be looked at as favorable. Uh for the city to move forward on on building one school if that's something that the council wished. I did inform them of the joint committee. Potentially taking up stuff soon. So they'll be watching that as it develops and we'll get them the uh Zoom invite so that they can. Log in as well. I did tell you about or Counsel Bartley told you about one of the communications, which was um uh Mayor Vista and the Providence Hospital. Uh I met with them over a Zoom in order to talk about what was going on. With all the details coming out, it meant it made more sense to have everyone be part of that committee meeting. So DJNR can take that up and the CEO and Jim Welch can sit down and walk you through. What is going to transpire with with Providence Hospital and what they're looking to do. Um, the Elections Commission, uh this council voted to approve us reviewing polling locations. Uh Counsel Bartley uh did text me for an updated status. We have a committee. Set up. I was waiting for a few members to confirm that they could do it. So we have stuff that's in the hopper in the sense of information that's being gathered. Uh giving an example quickly, uh Counsel Leahy on the movable polling locations, as I'll call it. Costs associated that is a handicap available. So we do have a committee. It's stuff that we're gathering up. We're gonna have a Zoom meeting towards, you know, mid-March, maybe the end of March and and go forward from there. And then we'll provide a report on a review of current locations. Locations that a lot of the committee members are are suggesting, i.e. the senior center. Uh someone mentioned Holy Cross. You you know, all different things have been thrown out there. It's gotta be reviewed. We have. Police, fire, schools, uh the clerk's office, the voter's office. All being a part of it and therefore I just wanted to give a quick update on that, but we'll get you a an official report as it it develops more. Uh finally, the senior center. I spoke with Nave. On on the senior center. And just for those who may not know, especially those who are watching. Um they're running a list of those who can sign up to get the vaccine. Not telling you have to go get it, but they have a system in place. So that if there's, you know, your time, they're gonna try and get you to Bay State. They're gonna try and get you to Hoyok Medical. They're gonna try and fit you in to get you and help you get a timeframe to get your your shot if that's what you're looking for. So if you need some help, you're having trouble scheduling that event. Do not hesitate to call the senior center and they're more than willing to help you and and get you signed up. That's all I have for now. It was lengthy. I apologize. Seeing no one else, we'll move on because we do have a long rest of the night. I thank you for that. Ordinance twenty six A. Which is Committee on Ordnance, who is referred in order that our engineer recommend. The most effective safety measures such as no parking here to the corner sign be placed at Vermont and Kane intersection. And no parking be established on Vermont Street to Kane Westfield Road. Enable emergency vehicles, buses, turns, intersections of safety for pedestrians. Uh refer to ordinance recommended at the or been complied with in that the recommendation of the engineer.
Receive and adopt?
Motion is receive, adopt. Under discussion, Counsel Lacy.
Um so this was an order filed by, I believe, um Counselor Bacon and. Um it's just, there's already no parking by ordinance in the um twenty feet from the corner. And so. The engineer suggested putting up some um signage so that it would be clear for people um that you can park there and and maintain the the line of sight distance there.
Anyone further? So motion is to receive, adopt the committee report and recommendations from the engineer. You don't need a roll call for this, do you, Counselor?
No, I don't believe so.
So all those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Twenty six B, the Committee on Ordnance, who is referred. In order that the city consider establishing a policy to provide handicap parking spots during winter reverse parking or bans. Or orders, the signage would be only be placed opposite uh current handicap parking slots. And only be enforced during reverse plowing period recommended. Has been complied with per the recommendation of the city engineer. Counsel Lacy?
Receive and adopt the committee report.
Motion is receive and adopt. Under discussion?
If I can make comments.
Uh, well, hold on, Counsel Lacy and then Counsel Murphy, please.
Um, well, it's Counsel Murphy's order, so um you know, I can defer to him. I think at the end of the day, the um engineer said that. Um th- there's just not an overall interest in um creating individual spaces for. For individual handicapped um people with their vehicles because the. Value of being able to clear the entire street sort of supersedes um the exceptions that we might be able to make for it for individuals.
All right, Counsel Murphy.
Yeah, thank you. And I I I appreciate the engineer's uh concerns and I think we said we had three hundred and sixty uh handicap parking spots in the city. Uh again, I did I filed this. There there are people who uh unfortunately are are disabled and have difficulty uh but are able to. When they can park in their normal spot. And that's why I tried to get it directly across from where they normally would park to try to make it as close as possible. I know I have people that come and they say when they come back in reverse parking. You know, they're a block away, two blocks away. And obviously, if you're disabled and and you got snow on the ground besides. Uh that just makes it tougher. I'm I'm still gonna try to figure out if there's some way we can do it. Maybe we do it by special request. Uh or something along that line. I I just think it it is. Potentially uh a very serious concern for those people that have the disability. So I mean, I appreciated the the. Engineer's concerns. I appreciated the committee taking it up and uh. You know, again, I'm gonna try to see if there's some way we can try to do something. And it may only be for a few people. Um but for those people, if that if that is uh potentially uh. In some cases, potentially disabling and and life threatening, I'm gonna try to see if we can find a solution. Thank you.
So motion is to receive and adopt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Twenty six C. The Committee on Ordnance was referred in order that the city of Hoyo's engineer provide a recommendation to the city council as to whether a four-way stop should be. Uh installed at the intersection of Hitchcock and Martin Street. Refer to the ordinance recommended. It's been complied with for the recommendation of the engineer.
Receive and adopt the committee report.
Motion is receive and adopt. Under discussion?
Um disability was filed by Counsel Bartley and um the engineer said that the um flashing red and yellow lights were. More appropriate for this intersection, given the um traffic thresholds.
Counselor Bartley, anything or no or?
Yeah, I I I guess um, you know, thi- this is a um. This probably gonna be one of my common um. Common orders every such so often, kind of like my the crosswalk on North Hampton Street by Blessed Sacrament. Uh it's it's a uh. It it gets turned down regularly by a city engineer, but but perhaps when perhaps there may be another city engineer with a different opinion. Down down the road, uh who who's who's not a uh. It's I mean, unless I understand his position, I appreciate the effort. Don't think I don't for a second. Um. But uh it's a uh it's a pretty, it's a pretty tough intersection. A- and and uh with with a lot of speeding and um. And and criteria that was presented, it wasn't necessarily uh presented with with the times that were um. Where where cars were counted and and things of that nature. So I. I mean, the you you can you can get out of, you can get out of it what you put into it. And so while I appreciate everything. I I I disagree with it. Um I and I'll uh I'll I'll try to, you know, I'll continue to monitor it. I'll continue to hear from people uh who. Who asked me to file this order and if and when it happens again, which I'm sure it will, I will file it again and we'll review it again. Thank you.
So motion that this has been complied with. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Off to Finance, twenty seven A. Uh Command Finance was referred in order in accordance with Master General law, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three A. The city council hereby accept the provisions of the. Mass DEP small scale initiative one thousand five hundred no match grant, which expires six thirty twenty twenty-one. Recommended that uh grant be accepted.
Take a motion to receive, pass the first reading for adoption.
Motion is receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Under discussion, Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a great attendance at the this finance committee meeting. We had two the past couple of weeks, but this one. Uh we had over nine city counselors present for most of the meeting, so I'll give uh some abbreviated reports, but be prepared to answer any questions if there are any. Uh and this particular grant, Mike McManus was in. Uh he let us know it's it's fifty hundred dollars, but. Mike has some grandeur visions on what he's gonna do both with this money. It's a second. Grant that he's received in this area. This particular one is gonna be earmarked towards a textile. Recycling program and what he does with it is gonna give, what in his words, some good points with uh DEP in terms of number of things that we do. He's still looking to uh to advance a lot of this, these projects he's working on. To do things with a swap shop with appliances and things that are dumped off at the uh at the yard itself that, you know, could be uh. Could be useful if they're recycled in different ways. So the committee thought it was a good suggestion and that we there is no match, that we accept the grant.
Anyone further? Seeing none, motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is to pass the second reading. Clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the grant.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Grady?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve twenty seven A, twenty seven B. Committee on Finance was referred in order in accordance with Master General law forty-four, section fifty-eight. The city council hereby accept the provisions of the neighborhood hub program, hundred thousand dollar no match, two-year grant.
Motion receive, pass the first reading for adoption.
Is receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh we had Aaron Vega with us uh to uh to discuss this grant. We had a good, very good discussion, to be quite frank. Uh the grant comes from the mass housing. Uh it is earmarked and geared towards several gateway cities. Including the city of Hoyo. It does provide technical assistance to older communities that have older housing stock, unusual amount of vacant properties. It gives uh some extra uh cash in order to what to hire a consultant and to. Or you have a lot of what is we see here in Hoyo, but I think all the gateway communities see it themselves. Uh Mr. Vega seems to have a pretty good handle on how to use this. And uh how the finance committee thought it was a good idea. There is no match, but to allow it to be accepted and used in said way.
Seeing no one further, motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All is opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for twenty seven B.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Grady?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve twenty seven B. Twenty seven C. Will you vote your approved twenty seven B, twenty seven C? Uh, command finances for an order of two hundred thirty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents be authorized from. Personnel department, police, fire identification. Appropriation of fiscal year twenty-one for services rendered in twenty twenty, recommended that it be approved.
Motion receive, pass the first reading for purposes of adoption.
Motion is receive, adopt, pass the first reading, under discussion councillor McGivern.
President, the only reason this is, this bill is before us is because it's from a prior fiscal year. If the bill was uh submitted properly in uh twenty uh twenty twenty, it would have just been paid out of the line item. Um, the it's police identification account, it's a a higher, it's a health. Insurance uh related medical expense that the individual for the uh city has. Has uh the the reimbursement coming to them. So we're, we have to pass it because it's using this year's monies. To pay last year's uh invoice.
Correct.
Committee recommends to adopt it.
Seeing no one further, motion is pass the first reading. All those in favor? All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading, clerk will call if you vote yes, you're voting to pay the two thirty-eight fifty-one.
Anderson Burgos? Anderson Burgos?
Remember to unmute.
Okay. Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Will you vote your approved uh. Paying fire bill. Councillor Graney, I see your hand up. Is that just because you're unmuting or is your hand up for a question?
He's on mute.
Is that mute?
He has to do stars.
No, I was on mute. Hello, uh, co- uh, Mr. President?
Yeah.
I was on mute, sorry. I pushed the, I pushed the button by mistake.
No, no worries. I was just making sure. Alright, twenty seven D, committee on finances referred. Uh, hereby appropriate two hundred and twenty thousand from sale of real estate to. Trash capital outlay motor vehicles, recommend it be adopted, so receive, adopt, pass the first reading, under discussion.
Suspend the rules, Mr. President, to also take up item number forty-five. We can do separate votes, but have a discussion on both.
Alright, so motion is suspend the rules to go out of order to forty-five as well. All of, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
So forty-five. Is from councillor McGivern. Order that the sum of one million two hundred sixteen five hundred be appropriated to pay for the cost of department. Of public works and fire department vehicles, one trash truck, two recycling trucks, one forestry truck. One alarm di- division bucket truck, and the payments and all costs incidents related here too. And appropriated pursuant to mass law. And order that shall be not, no change for the purpose of this bond authorized without the prior vote. An approval by the Hoyok City Council. Bartley amendment. I have to say that Kevin told me to. Uh, with that, um councillor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. The uh finance committee had uh not just one meeting, but actually two meetings in reference to this issue. Uh, began in January when we had our superintendent of D P W in. He gave us a very detailed explanation to the fleet, to the the status of the fleet of the D P W itself. Um, it's it's in dire shape. I think most of us knew that anyways. But he gave us uh all the, all the particulars on the years-making models of the uh. The apparatus that he uses for recycling, trash pickup, uh forestry and so on. Um, and in the more s- more recent um meeting, uh both the chief of the fire department, Jeff Preskowalski, joined us. And we collaborated and can combine for a global resolution. Uh, the need for a a bucket truck within the fire department itself. The bucket truck is, and I'll, I'll detail that one first and try to be quick, Mr. President. The bucket truck that the fire department is using is a, in two thousand fifteen, a orphan anti-truck. They very generously received from the gas and electric, which already had a lifespan of use on it. But the fire department alarm division used this bucket truck since two thousand fifteen and did so with uh with. With only the uh members of the alarm division, I think can do. Uh, they're looking to purchase a new truck which would be made to specs for what they do. It is slightly different. Than a bucket truck that an electric company uses, but the same idea is to get them up to where they have to work on the uh traffic signals and so forth. Um, so we, we outlined that with Chief Presk- Preskowalski. Uh, Mike McManus was with us for what he was looking for and and why within the uh. D P W uh, the recycling trucks were the recycling trucks that we got from the state when we began the recycling program itself. He told us that, you know, although they they've served a great purpose, there, two of them are on there at the end. Uh, there's actually three, but two of them are uh, are near the end of their their life uh expectancy, probably beyond their life expectancy. And he, his idea is, and there's, it's very good reasoning for this, is he wants to go to a different design for recycling. What he's looking for is to buy two trucks that would be, would still be the side loader, but would have a weight and ability. An option to compact what goes into the uh, into the bins. The current trucks just lift and dump it into the truck. It fills up very quickly and then they have to go to the MRF. Um, unfortunately, and that that is time consuming. And unfortunately, because of what happened in China. We now are dropping some things, not just at the MRF, but some of our recyclables go to the transfer station. Which is is a better deal at the moment for what the city is going with recycling, but that adds to the time down. With the uh, with the recyclers themselves, you know, making two stops when they're emptying the truck. So the two new trucks he's proposing to buy would keep them out in the streets longer. And then, you know, the uh, the trips to the MRF and the uh, the transfer station would be a little bit different. We have five trash trucks, uh, two are out of service and uh he's in dire need. Of replacing uh, he's looking to replace two of these at at the moment. Um, there's a need for a forestry truck, and I want to get into that last because. The uh, it's, it's a forestry truck that's been around, I think, since our our forester, you know, took the job, which is decades ago. And it's something that is a safety issue, the hydraulics are gone on on the lift. The uh, the ability to be safe and get up into the tree is just not there, so he's, he's looking to replace that. Now, that, that's the need, which which I think most of us do and most of us have agreed to, that it's there, there are noble. Noble needs and something that as a city, we need to replace these vehicles. The, the, the committee had a tremendous discussion, and I, I don't wanna, I'm not gonna single on everybody because everybody. Contributed to the uh discussion itself. When we first met with Mike McManus back in January, we said, there's more than one to pay, more than one way to pay for this. There's lease to own, there's bonding, and there's uh, of course, you know, always that, you know, that. Maybe not correct option, but the stabilization fund is the only other revenue source that we, we have at the moment. While we kind of as a consensus quickly ruled out stabilization as an option, even though that was what was technically in front of us. And we talked about lease to own, that sounded good. And I'll admit, I leaned towards it myself when I heard an interest rate of five uh. I think it was five and a half percent or five point two percent. And then a couple councillors quickly pointed out, uh, and then, and it's something that we've talked about in the past. In the um, we were, uh, the auditor gave us the, and Mike. Gave us the uh, the interest rates for uh, they're at an all-time low, quite, quite frankly. And the interest rates, depending on the number of years of uh the bond itself, can go as low as uh two percent, three percent. And uh make a big difference in bonding itself. So the committee came to a consensus, we had a very late communication from Senator McNary, who has been our bond counsel since nineteen. Seventy-three, she's a senior vice president for a uh finance, uh uh finance investing company within the city of Austin. And uh, Cinder said, with the interest rates the way they are, it makes no sense to use stabilization. It certainly is time to do borrowing. It looks like the best borrowing we could do is to bond for these vehicles themselves. Now, I asked to take up two items together for a reason. In committee, a point was made and the committee agreed to it. That there's a item which is the first item here, the two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, the. Line item, the money is coming from real estate uh sales. Uh, most of this two hundred and twenty thousand dollars is the money we received from the Lynch deal from uh. The developer, they purchased, they purchased the property for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There was some other. Money in there from prior real estate sales. And we, we were convinced that we could, or we were hoping that we could use this for operational cost. Which is, which in this case would have been, we were suggesting snow removal. Uh, that was researched uh by the auditor. We cannot use this money for very few exceptions. You know, which one of them is the uh, the use that is, that is proposed here. It's uh, the reason I I say this is if we, if we vote in favor of the two hundred and twenty thousand dollar. Transfer for the purpose of capital outlay. We, we can look at this as a savings from what we're borrowing, saving some interest down the road. So the, the committee voted to have a replacement bond given to us this evening. To replace the stabilization transfers. Later in this agenda, you'll see the committee report. Is the committee itself is recommending that we deny five stabiliz- five transfers that can. That have some type of the stabilization fund within them. And then we're also voting to deny a internal transfer that would do a lease to own for the forestry truck itself. And incorporate all them within the bond that, that's called the replacement bond, which is item number forty-five. Um, I'm sorry for the long report, I promised those. Concise, but the committee feels that bonding is the correct way to go. I can't emphasize enough. That the fire department needs to get this going because they have to go out to spec, they're, they're up, that truck is up for inspection. In September, it's gonna take two or three months just to get this out and then get it, to get the truck fitted to their. Their specs and their needs. The D P W, I think we all know because we have, we did have a. And talked at a long discussion on councillor Murphy's order about the shape of uh, why are recycling trash uh. It's not just all about the vehicles, but why are recycling track, trash pickups are getting so far behind on a weekly basis? So we, we had that discussion and we came to a consensus that the bonding is the correct way to go. And I open up, I would suggest that we open up the discussion on item, the two hundred and twenty thousand dollars to save a little bit of money because. There's very little we can use that money for in terms of operational costs. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you everyone for listening.
Councillor Leahy?
Yes, uh, good evening. Um, yeah, uh, so we did have an excellent meeting and. Um, I was one of the councillors that uh kind of uh put my heels on the ground saying that. Um, I'm not going to take money out of stabilization uh for this, and I'm also not going to um. Uh, even before I saw the letter from Cinder, I was not also going to um, uh, vote for uh a lease to own. I believe at this time, um, we should combine, and I said it multiple times that night, we should combine the uh, the trucks with the Department of Public Works. With the fire department. It only makes sense. Put it up to bond, let future generations pay for it. These trucks should last a long time. Not only our generation, but the next generation can afford to uh help pay for this as well. Uh, we definitely need trucks. Uh, we needed the. The truck in the alarm division. Uh, it's just a mere safety issue now. God forbid if somebody was up there and something happened. Um, I wouldn't want that on my shoulders. Uh, and also with the Department of Public Works. Um, as you know, just we're getting phone calls, we're getting the texts, we're getting emails. Uh, they need uh some working equipment. Uh, but once again, bond for it and uh we'll pay for it over the years. Thank you.
Councillor Sullivan?
Yeah, thanks. Um, so I, I have a um question for the finance chair uh through you.
Uh, sure.
Uh, so councillor McGivern, I'm, I'm a little confused though on the dollar amount. On uh. Item forty-five, we're looking for a million two sixteen. But two hundred twenty thousand. Is what we're transferring from real estate to the uh capital outlay for motor vehicles. Which I think would leave us only needing nine ninety-six five.
I could answer, Mr. President?
Councillor McGivern?
Uh, very fair question, councillor Sullivan, and that, that took place, obviously, since the finance committee met. We found out we could, what we can and can't use the two hundred, the real estate money for. Um, the, the bond itself, if I'll refer to item forty-five in all bonding language, is very specific. It, it details exactly what the city can borrow for. It details how the city can use a particular bond. Once it's borrowed for, and no matter what we do, the, the amount that we put into a bond is the max amount needed. For what is being proposed by our city departments or the needs for our city departments themselves. Um, I, I'm not sure, Mr. President, but I, I heard there might be a, a late filed as part of an option coming into, or. Maybe I'm wrong about that, but Tanya did a lot of uh emails the past couple of days, and I think I got some of my. My email readings confused. But councillor Sullivan, I, I, I knew this question was coming, and it's, it's correct. It, it does. If we pass the two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, it certainly would uh reduce the amount that the city could borrow. Um, and then the good faith part of it is that the details are in the bond language itself where. They can't just use the money for something else without coming back before us. I think that's part of the uh, the Bartley amendment or some amendment that we made years ago, even when it was already a known thing. That we tightened that up to uh, to make sure that the uh, as the school department did, I think was the one that we had a long discussion with about it.
Well, would it, would the Senate still allow them to do uh something else with the two hundred twenty thousand? Uh, so, I mean, it seems to me we're just asking for still an excessive amount of what, what we would need if that was in there also.
Well, it, there's very limited things that the two hundred and twenty thousand dollars can be used for. Uh, there's always something else. But, you know, the, the discussion for the, the mayor asked me to, to see if we could keep, you know, keep the two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. To reduce the amount that we borrow for no other reason than reducing amount that we borrow. We do have projects coming down the road for bonding. The rates hopefully are gonna stay low. Uh, if we do enter into uh, into discussions about a middle school, you know, we're gonna have to absorb that within the budget. So certainly, we, we want to keep that in mind, that, you know, the, the more capacity we have, the better options we have as we approach those discussions. But it's, it's not make or break it. If we don't want to use the real estate money. You know, for, to save some ins- to save some interest, that's fine too.
Um, I, I, I guess I'm still, um, you, you know, maybe it's getting late and I'm getting tired, but I.
We're not even halfway through. I'm making a motion to recess till tomorrow at eleven o'clock.
I, I, I just still, uh, at a loss if we're putting the two twenty in there. Why request two hundred twenty thousand more than we need for these vehicles?
Uh, again, the, the amount is a max number, not the amount that's being requested. But the amount that they can borrow up to if needed. You know, when, when things go out, you know, to spec. The, I, I think the fire truck, I think we got a, a price on it. The, some of the other trucks, you know, Mike has gone out to get some, some pricing on it, but we still have to bid. And we still have to, you know, get the uh, each of these vehicles fitted accordingly. So the exact dollars amount, um, the exact dollars amounts will change. But I realize this is a two hundred and twenty thousand dollar difference, and the answer to the question is, you know, we, we met. A week ago, week and, you know, week and a couple of days ago, and, you know, this is what was on the table, not knowing. Because when we were in committee, if I'll just remind everybody, we voted down the two twenty down, we recommend, the recommendation was to. To vote it down to use it for snow removal. Now we found out we can't use it for snow removal. We're suggesting we could go back to using it to reduce the amount of the max for the bond.
Yes, Mike, an- another way of saying it is, for all the trucks, you got the trash truck, recycling trucks. Forestry truck, alarm division, it's one point two sixteen five. Of which, if we pass something under that, the nine hundred thousand that you're talking about. And we didn't approve the two twenty, then you'd be missing a truck. So here you approve the full amount. To say you're gonna bond for all the trucks, but then as other monies comes in, you can offset the bond amount by that. But if you don't put the full bond in. You know, you're trying to back into the number. It's the way that they're looking to do it. Hopefully that doesn't confuse them more. Well, hold on, hold on councillor Granny, councillor Sullivan has the floor.
I, I get what we're saying, but I want everybody to see, what we're really doing is we're approving, we're, we're putting into there a million four thirty-six. Is what we're putting in.
No, 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 you're putting in one point two, but then if the two twenty comes in and they use that. Your bond would go down the way you're saying. I know, I know how you're saying it, but as we all say, is you approve a bond for X. But if other monies come in, you're not really bonding for the one point two. But if you were not, if you were to say tonight, the 220, we're not approving, we're just not approving. Then you'd have an insufficient bond for the rest of the, the apparatus.
Why?
It, it wouldn't have.
You'd have a lower bond for the, the number. It's, you're, you're trying to bond for something, then offset it or other things pass. I know what you're saying. You should pass the 220, then get a bond for the 900, but not knowing where we stand. We cannot amend numbers on the floor. So we couldn't say add or subtract. So you kind of got to back into the number this way. I didn't write the rules. I can only tell you how they work.
Okay, I'm, I'm done.
Right, Counsel Grady's next, then Counsel Tom, and then Counsel Bacon.
Yeah, just to, uh, once again, give kudos to the, uh, finance chair. It was a, a fantastic meeting. It was open. We had input from every, every which way but loose. We had input from everyone. Uh, it was a thorough discussion. The needs, uh, and the methods, uh, to, to solve those needs. Uh, uh, it was fantastic and, uh, the, uh, auditor, everybody said that the most, the probably the most efficient way to go was to bond, that the, this is the ideal time to borrow money. That is, there hasn't been a greater time, uh, to borrow money, uh, for, for many years. And this was the way to go. So I, I, I fully support this, this, uh, this, uh, this motion, this, uh, the city go ahead and to, to go ahead and bond for these trucks which are sorely needed. And, uh, it's just the appropriate way to go. So, uh, once again, kudos to the finance chair. He did a heck of a job. Thank you, Joe.
Counselor Tomlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. Uh, it was a great meeting. Um, Joe, you ran a great meeting about that. Uh, how we're going to pay for these, uh, these vehicles. And I know in the beginning, you know, a lot of counselors had some reservations about stabilization and we found out that it wasn't the way to go. Um, and bonding was the best. And I did bring up since the money was there for real estate that I would like to take that 220 and lease buy one truck um, for the DPW. Mike did emphasize that it takes up to six to seven months to order these trucks once the money's approved. And we know that they are neat, sorely needed, especially, uh, you know, the trash trucks. So, um, I'm in favor of the 220 from the real estate to at least purchase one truck and also for the bond of the, for the purchase of the other vehicles. Thank you.
Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to clarify one thing. So the way that I'm reading this is the bonding does include the trash truck that is listed in item 27D, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the way that I'm understanding item 27D is that if we approve it, we can then use the real estate money to pay down on the debt. Because the only way that we can spend the real estate money is if we are using it to apply to debt that will extend for five years or more.
Correct.
Is that another way of saying what Counsel Sullivan was trying to get at? Cause that's the way I'm understanding it.
Yeah, you're not going to pay 1.2 and 2.200,000. You're not going to spend more than. Because, you know, Counsel Bartley brought up a great point. If, if you're going to do the real estate, why don't you take a hundred thousand of the real estate and apply it towards, uh, paying for the snow removal? So there are unknowns.
Ex- exactly. But what I want to confirm and what I want to make sure I'm understanding correctly is that if we do vote for the 220,000, that it will then be used to reduce the bond amount.
Correct. That's what it's going towards.
I just want to make sure that.
It will, it will.
We're totally clear on that.
Yep.
Thank you.
That's why I said if you didn't understand me, I'll, I'll repeat, but yeah, that's what I was doing. Uh, Counseler Bartley is next.
Yeah, just, just to clarify. So let's see, it's the, in item 45 is one, two, three, it's the fourth further order down that we call the Bartley amendment. I didn't name it that, Kevin did, but it's, but, but, but we all know why it's there. Those of us who are here before, so I just want to say that out loud. That's that, not to hear my name. I don't give a darn. It's just, it's just, we passed that at my, when I filed the order just for this very circumstance. Because that is exactly what the former DPW superintendent did by shuffling bond money with, that we approved and shuffled it without our authorization. And now they can't do that anymore. So it's my understanding, although I don't really, you know, we, we had a great meeting and find, we all said it, but I'll, I'll, I'll repeat. It was a great meeting of finance. I, I'm going to say one, one other thing that, that maybe nobody else has said, that, um, that, that what we did in finance, and that's related to the, it was imperative that we, we had the email from Cinder McNerney, which is agenda item 12. And I, I know Jeff has got that up on the city council website with, with all our, that, that email. Um, you know, you can read it for yourself, but it said, it said, you know, now, now's the time to bond. Uh, and because interest rates are low, but more, more than that, uh, it, it just having stabilization provides strength to the city's financial position and flexibility. And that's bond council's thinking. And so that was imperative. I think the, um, orders that were originally proposed by the mayor were simply for stabilization. I don't think there was a lot of deep thinking on that, but that was, the deep thinking was left to the finance committee and those who attended the finance committee meeting from the, from the city council, the finance chair recognized. So department heads, Mr. President, were told, there's only one way to do this, Mr. President. Only one way. This is the only way, said the mayor. Stabilization. That was not true. As we found out that night, Mr. President, we have a great, we have several options. One, what we, we have, we have funds from, from another source, a sale of real estate. We also found out, as I, and, and said that night, we're also getting another quarter million dollars from the sale of the geriatric authority. It's going to go into that same account. So there's another funding source possibly for another vehicle down the road that I want the public to be aware of, a quarter million dollars. And, and just on that, we saved $3 million by getting rid of that white elephant and demolition costs. So that, that's, that's just important for the public to, to understand and for all of us here that, that are, that are paying attention to, to understand. I, I think also we heard from, uh, from, from, uh, uh, that there, there, there's, there's more to the stabilization. There, there's, there's bonding, there's, uh, uh, which, which she said is not only because we have flexibility, because the interest rates are great. It's going to be a benefit to the city going forward. So department heads were only told one way by the mayor. The city council did the heavy lift in finance and found out there are multiple other ways. And department heads got back to me personally, said, we didn't know that. And by the way, thank you very much to all the members of the committee. And on top of that, it was from, from one member, uh, a longstanding employee. It was the best committee meeting I ever attended and the most informative. And this is a veteran member of holy of government that said that to me. The best meet, and the person's been in scores and scores of meetings. The best, most informative meeting we, we've ever had, said to me directly. Now, I'm not going to say the person's name because I wasn't authorized, but suffice to say that was, that was an accurate, uh, uh, paraphrase of, of what the party said to me. Uh, so, so, uh, you know, listen, I, I, I will, Mr. President, support this uh, because I think the finance chair has given us some good direction, especially that night. But the whole body, uh, and also one last point, I also want to thank our city auditor, our appointee, who came through in the nick of time with some really important intel and that made that committee meeting go well. So, so kudos to Tanya. Thank you.
Counsel Bacon, your hand stop.
Oh, I'm all set.
No worries. Um, anyone further? Seeing none, back to 27D. We'll take them up, uh, one at a time, Joe.
I hear no objections. I guess we could do those as a package.
So motion is, we, we have it as a package still. So motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading for 27D and 45. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pack it, pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for both. One is the 220,000. The other one is the 1.2 ish bond for the vehicles.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Grady?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve both those items. Uh, 27E.
I can make a motion to suspend the rules and take 27E, 27G, 27J and 27I as a package.
Motion to suspend the rules, take up E, G.
I hope I got the right ones.
I think you did. I have it written down. I and J as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, I was just waiting for you to make the motion.
You want H in there too, Joe?
Uh, no, that's going to be a separate discussion, but.
All right, so E is the committee on finance referred 330,000 from stabilization to trash capital outlay vehicles. Um, G is 160,000 from stabilization to fire department capital outlay vehicle. Um, skip H, go to I. I is committee on finance for $37,750 from, uh, forestry waste recycling coordinator to forestry vehicle lease. 27J is 330,000 from, uh, stabilization and sale of real estate to capital outlay, uh, vehicle. Recommended that they be denied, um, with a recommendation of mayor and the chief and the order to put together a bonding package as we.
Make a motion to receive and deny each of these items.
Motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading to deny E, G, I and J. Under discussion.
Real quick, Mr. President, these, these are the items as we just discussed that were, were proposed by the mayor to come from, mostly from stabilization for the purpose of the vehicles that we just agreed to, uh, to bond for with the, uh, with the real estate transfer. Um, I want to say a couple of things real quick. Uh, I, I, I mean this very sincerely and, and, and I, I think everybody that was at the meeting and it was just about everybody understands that the, the collaboration of the committee, the noncommittee members and our department heads was fantastic. It had very little to do with me. It was, it was a meeting that was easy to run, Mr. Chair, Mr. President. It was something that I, I, I'm not seeing that often where everybody just made their contributions and it, all of a sudden it fell together like a, like a package, like it was meant to be. I also want to give, and Mike Mc, Mike Mcvanus was tremendous. He, he had some numbers that, you know, read the tip of it, ready to talk about the bonding and ready to talk about, uh, not just his deeds, but how to finance his deeds. Um, the auditor got to the mayor before I could the next morning. And, uh, the auditor, you shared Cinder McNary's email with the mayor. The mayor immediately changed his mind and, uh, agreed to go with the finance committee recommendations itself. I spoke to him later. Uh, the only thing we talked about was the real estate money and, uh, some other things that are going on in, uh, in life in general. But, um, I, I just wanted to thank everybody again because it was, was a, the results were great, but the collaboration was, was remarkable throughout the whole meeting.
Anyone further? Seeing none. Uh, motion to pass first reading to deny all four of these. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading to deny.
Motion is to pass the second reading to deny. The clerk will call the roll. Once again, as a reminder, if you vote yes, you're voting to deny.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Grady?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve those. Back to 27F. The committee on finance was referred in order that the superintendent of DPW appear before the DGR committee to try and develop a better communication system for residents. Regarding trash recycling won't be picked up because of snowstorm. In addition, the discussion should include trying to find a way to get back to pick up residents within the short timeframe. When considering recycle pickup by cancellation rather than a postponement means they have almost one month of materials of storage. Uh, would this be an area where work going at Roca might be more, uh, quickly recover these services from a storm? Recommend that's been complied with.
Motion to adopt the committee report?
Motion is to receive, adopt, under discussion.
Mr. President, I want to first thank, uh, DG. This is Counsel Murphy's order, which we stole from DGR. Um, we thank DGR for allowing us because it helped us in our deliberation for, for the, uh, the, the vehicle proposals, especially for the DPW. Um, I'll just do a couple of highlights and, and I think Counsel Murphy, you know, should address his order because it hit the point of what is happening in every neighborhood of the city right now and has been for some time. And that's delays in recycling and, and trash pickup, which most of us understand why. But what wasn't happening was the communication as to when a delayed pickup was going to take place. And sometimes it was actually delayed for two weeks, which I think Counsel Murphy pointed out. It's a tremendous burden on the household to collect tra- to collect recycling for two weeks. Um, the other half of the vehicle problem to, to pick up is manpower. And what we learned was, is at the, and I lost my notes, so I'm going to let Counsel Murphy take up on me. But I think there's close to 10 people or 13 people on, on workers comp right now or some combination of like that. And, and Mike explained to us how he's juggling manpower, how he's got the ability for, uh, for hiring some temporary help. Union allowed it and we get a transfer that we're talking about. And I, and I think this, this order probably should have went first because in the committee, we handled this first before we talked about bonding. But it's Counsel Murphy's order, so that's our report and the order was complied with, but if Terry wants, certainly let him add in.
Counsel Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, uh, committee chair. Uh, I appreciate two things. Number one, uh, I, it was a good meeting. And, uh, we've, we've made progress, but we still need to make more progress. Uh, and, and we, we need to get to the point where we are totally caught up. And just the, the communication is better, but we still have a ton of residents who are not part of the communication process. So let me, if there's anyone from the press at our meeting, let me ask you, let me beg you to work with the DPW to publish, uh, in the, your newspapers, uh, the schedules that are being posted. I, the, the, tonight's posting did not come out till 7:12. Uh, and, uh, just, just so you know, I'm going to read it so people can know, uh, this is the communication from the Department of Public Works. On Wednesday, March 3rd, tomorrow, we will begin collecting Monday's trash. If your trash day is on a Monday or Tuesday, please put your trash to the curb. So I know they're collecting Monday tomorrow. I'm not quite sure by the Tuesday, but that's the suggestion. We will finish Thursday's blue week recycling tomorrow morning and begin Monday's green week recycling, uh, also tomorrow. If your recycling day was on, was, uh, this Monday, please put your recycling out to the curb. Uh, we, we need, and I, and I know, you know, as you all know, I'm not the most techie person in the world. So, and if I'm not, and, uh, I know there's a lot of other people that aren't getting these communications. So we need to find a better way. And I appreciate that we're making progress. And I, we, I think it was seven people on workers comp from the trash detail, uh, as I understood it. Uh, we did hire four temporaries. Um, I would encourage the mayor to work with the DPW if we have to, uh, work with anyone else. We do have a contract with Roke. I don't know if we spent that money, if we could get them to help out. We need to get to the point where we catch up so that we don't have to necessarily send out a notice other than when there's a snow day, uh, to get this done. Uh, and we need to get these notices out as early as possible. And I'm suggesting at the end of the workday at four o'clock, four thirty, which is when they usually come out. And if, uh, our, our, uh, newspaper reporters are, are listening to that and could get that and, and have that at least. at least for the next couple of weeks until we get this problem resolved, published in the newspaper. So people that read the newspaper and decide where they get their information as opposed to a website uh will be more aware. And I know Council Bartley and I thank him for this. I know he sent out to many of his constituents a, a a notification about the emergency uh notification system on the city's uh website. And I know that's helped some people. But uh, I know I've walked my street and I, and I tell some people it's not being picked up today, but it, it's already out. And again, once it's out, a, and I saw without not being the youngest person in the world, but I saw a woman today who was struggling with, with, with trash and, and I don't think her trash was gonna get picked up, but I'm not positive. Uh, so, I mean, we need to find a way to get this resolved. I appreciate the communication and we need to keep, keep that communication as part of our natural day-to-day uh way of communicating. And if we can find additional methods to get more people aware of it, uh, we'll have less problems. And I, and I, and I do appreciate the problem with the vehicles. And obviously, I hope we the city leaders in the future recognize that we can't be waiting until we have vehicles that are broken down. And now it's six or seven months before we get the replacement vehicles. I did suggest that we talk to other regions, other community around that might be might have extra vehicles that they might be able to let us use. Obviously, we could pay a fee or whatever uh so that we are not running out where a vehicle runs that, uh, runs down and we're unable to continue. I mean, this is uh, again, this is an issue that is a quality of life issue. Hoyok is lucky that we do pick up the trash and recycling and, and I, and I think most residents appreciate that. Uh, uh, but we need to find a way to get this. And I, my hope is that by next Friday, not this Friday, but by next Friday, we're back to normal. We're back to a regular schedule. We've caught up. We've made the, if we have to spend money for supplemental people or on overtime, that we get that done so that you know, people aren't asking, when is my trash getting collected? My, mine was out there three days now and it's still not collected. We, we just gotta make sure that that doesn't happen again. And I appreciated the meeting and I appreciated uh all of the concerns and I appreciated the effort. We just gotta keep making that effort and we gotta resolve these problems in a more timely manner in the future. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Good evening, folks. Yeah, so I, I had multiple, multiple lengthy conversations uh with Michael McManus. And, you know, basically I, I asked him, I said, what have we gotta do? Um, because I, I can't count the amount, the amount of emails, calls um that I received the past few weeks in regards to trash and recycling. And um from what I gather, he has twelve people. Those twelve people are split between three that work in recycling and nine that work for trash. Nine out of the twelve are on workman's comp. And so I asked him, do you have a, a backup plan? So his backup plan currently, he's signing a contract. I assumed, wrong for me to assume, but he, I assumed he had already signed this contract with uh People Ready. It's an aid, a temporary agency um that will help with the aid in recycling and trash pickup. Um, and then we also talked about the vehicles and them breaking down. And then he mentioned to me that one of, one of the recycling um vehicles that it would cost over thirty something thousand dollars to fix. And this old. And I said, okay, so then what do we need to do? I'm so, I'm thankful for the meeting that you guys had and approving this um this bond. Um, it's, it's going to improve the city um recycling and the services that, that the city pays the taxes for. And um uh, we just, you know, I, I've been working very closely with, with Michael. Anything that I can do and anything that we all can do to make this you know, a better, better services for the community. I'm, I'm for it. Um, thank you.
Counselor Lisi?
Uh, thank you. So um, I've been checking in with um Superintendent Mike McManus a couple of times um a week about this issue and um, I think that um the proposal that um was put before him to work with Roka, um essentially Roka doesn't really want their um youth on the trucks doing that sort of work. So that, that's not a possibility. Um, the temp agency, People Ready, that um he was able to sign the contract with, um, the union contract um allows up to four uh temporary workers, but we've really only been able to get um one or two um since we signed the contract. And so that's been um inconsistent and just not really getting us to the point where we're back on schedule, back on track. Um, and then finally, I, I suggested that maybe um it's time to look into an intermunicipal agreement with our neighboring communities um in a similar way that we have these intermunicipal agreements with like police and fire in case there's an emergency. Um, we can get some help from other communities and um, Mr. McManus is not quite ready to explore that as um a solution. Um, I think he does feel confident that as uh Council Murphy said, that we should be back on track by next week. Um, but I, I, I do think that um it's worth looking into, especially if the unions are similar across municipalities. I think that it, it, it may not be so difficult to navigate in the long run. Um, and I think it provides a, a potentially, you know, interesting sort of reciprocal relationship there that uh multiple communities in the, in the region could benefit from. Thank you.
Anyone further?
Just one last comment.
Counselor Murphy?
And again, this is the kind of thing we gotta anticipate these kind of problems coming out. And certainly as we're getting people on workers' comp. Uh, and, and I'm assuming this isn't the first time. And I know some of it is, I think some of it is uh related to the virus, but I'm not positive. Some of it's related to work injuries on the job. Uh, but I would assume that is uh especially on the job, based on the job uh criteria are some of the things that we could expect to happen regularly. Uh, and, and therefore we have to have a plan in place when that happens. How do we deal with it? And it can't be two or three, four weeks before we find a solution. We gotta be thinking about those things ahead of time. And, and again, I just encourage that and if, and I would also suggest if it's in the contract that we can only hire four temporary and uh yet we've got so many people out that we can't do the job, then we need to find a way to work with the union and get that to be a, a complimentary uh agreement that provides the service and still protects their, their workers. Uh, and if, if that's not happening, then we need to consider some kind, or obviously we aren't negotiating, but the negotiators need to consider some way of making that better. Thank you.
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. Um, I'll be brief. But the superintendent cannot disclose the status of the DPW workers under HIPAA. But it is standard practice that if there is an employee that tests positive, that has been a contact with the other workers, that they all need to remain out. Um, generally fourteen days to be sure that they don't turn positive. So my guess is that this is probably the unfortunate circumstance that probably has arisen at DPW. Um, the only upside of it being that it will be a one-time occurrence and likely not to be repeated. So it has put us into a tough situation, particularly with windstorms. So we will all, as part of our political campaigns, have the opportunity to do neighborhood cleanups in every single ward this year. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just along the uh workman's comp, uh, we did, I did ask uh Mike about how, does he challenge, or I shouldn't say challenge, but does he investigate each of the workman's comp claims? And he does the same thing the police and fire department does. Uh, just to keep, you know, just to keep everybody honest, is they go through the, the same management, same company that looks into a, a workman's comp claim. And it's vetted out to make sure that it's up and up.
Seeing no one further, motion at twenty-seven F has been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Twenty-seven H, committee on finance referred an order of a hundred thousand dollars from stabilization to snow removal services. Uh, have considered the same, recommend that transfer be denied with further recommendation of transfer from the sale of real estate line item. Under discussion, Counsel McGivern?
President, the um discussion in committee was, was about stabilization. I think we've had had a prior conversation, which is carries over about snow removal cost, uh, the, the amount per storm for a three-inch or more storm is, I think in the thirty-five hundred uh thousand, I'm sorry, thirty-five hundred dollar range. Of course, materials being salt, uh mixed uh sands much cheaper and uh and manpower and country, and contractual services is all part of it. Uh, with this came before us, we had hoped uh yeah, and I believe it was Counselor Bacon's suggestion, quickly picked up by a number of counselors about not using stabilization if we could have used that real estate uh money, the money that was in the real estate, from real estate sales itself, which we found out since this committee meeting that we cannot. I realize the committee is, is voting to the digest. And I, I don't wanna ruin a great uh evening of discussion with the finance committee. But I suggest we have a quick conversation as to adopting this transfer for the purpose of paying for snow removal services. Mike told us that his account is down to eight thousand. Um, there's obviously been uh at least one treatment, if not one storm since then. And uh it's, it's just something I think is worth discussion this evening. If everybody is set that not to use stabilization at this point, I understand, but there is a need and you can only use it for snow removal if we put it in that line item.
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, also in the discussion in that meeting, um, the superintendent had proposed a transfer of thirty-five thousand dollars from a line within his budget toward the lease purchase of a vehicle. And so my other suggestion was that that thirty-five thousand be transferred and be used for snow before the superintendent comes back to us to take from stabilization. Um, if we do get further storms, we'll have adequate time to do that. Uh, because that would cover, I think, for the bills that he owes at this time, plus it would cover another storm based on his cost figures that he provided to the committee. Thank you.
Anyone further for this one? Alright, so the motion currently is to deny. Uh, so motion is receive, adopt, pass the first reading to deny.
Moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is
Second reading?
Motion is to pass the second reading to deny. The clerk will call the roll. Remember, if you vote yes, you're voting to deny the request.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Uh, before I vote, I'm confused. We're voting against the, the bond for the?
No, no, no. This is for a hundred thousand for stabilization to snow removal. Which the committee voted to deny. So if you vote yes, you're voting to go with the committee to deny.
Okay, yes. Sorry. Thank you.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
No.
Murphy?
No.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Eleven ayes, two nays.
With your vote, you've denied the request for a hundred thousand. There is no more finance. There's no public safety committee onto public service. Counselor Leahy?
Can I um take up uh as a package? Twenty-nine A to twenty-nine E?
Bacon?
Absolutely, you can. Alright, so motion is to take up twenty-nine A to twenty-nine E as a package. Suspend the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Twenty-nine A, Public Service Appointing, Dr. John, I don't wanna butcher it, uh Conservation Commission, which would be till February first, twenty twenty-three. And then Dr. Markcott uh is twenty-nine B for the Library Board, term to expire twenty twenty-four. Twenty-nine C is Jason LaFabe, uh, Library Board for February twenty twenty-three. Twenty-nine D is uh Rich Purcell for the Soldiers Home, Commissioner of the Soldiers Home Memorial of the City for September thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. And then uh Joan Plummer for the Library Board, February twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion that we receive, adopt, and confirm and uh I'll give a brief synopsis.
Motion is receive, adopt, that they've been complied with. Under discussion, Counselor Leahy.
Yeah, thank you. We also um uh talking about our last subcommittee meeting, finance, that was a fantastic meeting. This, this was a good meeting as well. Um, and just looking at the names of these people, if you look at their CVs and their, their resumes, it's a, a very uh uh academically strong bunch of people. Uh, the mayor did a very good job uh by putting up these people, servant boards. Uh, the first one, uh, Dr. John Pre, Perez. Um, lives on Cabot and Linden Street. He owns um an animal hospital. And I know, we all know, but for the people at home, uh, this is a doctor, uh, not only is he a doctor, but he has a ma, masters in Chinese. He has his PhD in uh biology. And of course, is Doctor of Vet or Science. Uh, very, very well-educated person. He owns a, a, a animal hospital here in Hoyok. And he specializes uh specifically on larger breed animals. So he's going throughout the country. Um, you know, around here, different towns and working on, you know, big animals such as, you know, cows and horses. Pretty interesting. Um, he uh, he talked about how um he learned a lot about the city government when he was opening his hospital. He had to learn about, you know, dealing and handling and uh, you know, making sure that the neighbors knew that this wouldn't be a bad business. Um, because it wasn't a residential neighborhood. He learned a lot about uh city government. And he also uh knows a lot about um the Conservation, Conservation Commission. Uh, as you can imagine, he said, uh, with all that uh education, he's one that is uh quite a reader. And so Conservation Commission meetings usually uh, my wife was on it for years. Uh, has a folder, probably about a hundred pages at least for each meeting. So he's uh definitely gonna be suited for that. Uh, the next one is Dr. Stephanie Markott. This is also for the library, or this is for the library board. She wasn't able to meet the uh, meet us at the night of the meeting. However, I did have Jeffrey send out her resume and her CV. And I encouraged any person that had any questions to her uh to call her. I did have a good, you know, half hour conversation with her. Uh, she has her doctorate in uh transformative leadership. Uh, specifically in higher education. She lives in Hoyok. She's an adjunct faculty member uh at Hoyok Community College. Um, she serves on many different boards, many different academic boards. Um, she lives here with her husband, who used to be a, a mailman, and now he's a, you may ask, getting his doctorate degree as well. Um, so now we have Mr. Jason LaFerb, Library Board. Uh, he was originally the um, uh, library, the Hoyok Children's Library Director, fourteen years. Uh, now he works at the first library in Amherst. Um, he spoke about, you know, the lack of um, uh, the lack of salaries. And it's kind of deflating. He's talking about the, the different people and it's hard to retain good people in the city of Hoyok, specifically at the library level. Some of the things he wants to do is when he was here before, uh, he had a mobile library. Um, hopefully he'd be back to doing that. Uh, uh, another good candidate. Um, we also have uh Mr. Richard Purcell. Uh, this is for the Commission of the Soldiers Home Memorial. Um, uh, he's a uh, no stranger to think to any of us. Um, some of the comments that were made that, you know, uh, uh, as you said, you might not agree with me, my political thoughts. But um, I'm a dedicated person and I'll go a step above that. I think he's a extremely dedicated person. And we had a great interview with him. Uh, what a quite uh, a great background that he has. Uh, he's a US Army vet. He's completely dedicated to veterans. I've known that. Uh, he's been a Bay State employee for twenty-nine years. Uh, he also had a lot of volunteer uh work with the New Wave Race Bronza. Um, he's also just recently applied for a CPA grant. Uh, so if you hear that, Michael, um, to clean the War Memorial on the outside. Um, he also started uh farmers markets. So inside the War Memorial, they have three different farms, so it can stay um, you're on top of each other. And I think it's two Saturdays a month. Uh, you can go in there and there's three different farms for the uh farmer's market. He also thought outside the box and he's brought in uh worldwide wrestling. Um, he brought in the Valentine's Day dance. And he does a lot with uh, which I never heard of, but dragging ball racing, which I thought was interesting. And he does a lot with, uh, which I'd never heard of, but dragging ball racing, which I thought was interesting. Um, Joan Plummer, another person, she's retired microbiologist, uh, specifically in the forms of data management. Um, she was our first one of the evening and she's going to be on the library board. And she is a very interesting lady too, um, is retired. She wants to get more involved. And, uh, the library is a good fit for her. So, uh, that's that.
Anyone further? No? See, no one motions, uh, to receive, adopt, that has been complied with and approve the appointments for all twenty-nine A to twenty-nine E? Was there a question? Someone had a question? No? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Off to DG and R. We did thirty A onto thirty B. Uh, Commandeeg DGNR was referred in order that the City Council adopt a similar resolution to that of the attached from Springfield. The committee should invite in Counselor Edmund Goz- uh, Adam Goz- Goz- Gozman, I'm just messing up tonight. Melissa Mark, Patero and, um, committee meeting to discuss, have considered the same, uh, resolution has has been passed.
Yeah, motion receive and adopt, can we report?
Motion receive, adopt, under discussion, Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, we were really want to express gratitude to, um, uh, State Senator Adam Gomez. And, um, this is filed by the Ward Four Counselor. We we were all in support of it. We had a really good discussion. Everybody pitched in as per usual nowadays. And, uh, it's essentially a a resolution, um, that says on behalf of the city of Hoyok that we support the Island of Puerto Rico's, uh, Self-Determination Act of twenty twenty. You you might have noticed, Mr. President, I I had filed a communication, uh, that we took up at Agenda Item Number Seven that was relative to this. That was a, uh, front page article in the Hartford Gazette. Uh, last year that that talked about a vote, uh, and it 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 didn't call for this, but it 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 was, um, it just, it just shows you that there's, there's a lot of, um, political activity and a lot of discussion about this issue. And, uh, we voted unanimously to say to, um, the, uh, delegation in, uh, in DC that we, uh, we support, uh, what's referred to as HR eight, one, one, three, which is the Puerto Rico Self-Determination Act of twenty twenty. And, uh, it's a really good order. Uh, there's a lot of information in the resolution, a lot of history in there too, which makes it for, makes for some great reading and some great history and, um, and finally, it, uh, it was called to my attention. I I I didn't realize, I I looked at the sprinkler, but it it is Hoyok centric. And, uh, w- once we had that confirmed, uh, it was all hands on deck. We we supported five love. Thank you.
Anyone further? There is an attachment here for this order, the Hoyok draft, as well as the Springfield Council draft was based on and is included, and that is true here. So with that, motion is that, uh, we receive, adopt, that the resolution has been passed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thirty C, Commandeeg DGNR, who was referred in order that DGNR Committee meet with Hoyok Media to put together an action plan to televise city council meetings and subcommittee meetings. Translating to Spanish, the goal is to televise, uh, within forty-eight hours of the actual meeting. Recommend that be complied with.
Motion receive, adopt, to committee report?
Motion to receive, adopt, under discussion, Counselor.
Yeah, uh, we 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 had this up once before and we we tabled it for some more intel. We received more intel. We had, uh, great help from Scott McPherson at Hoyok Media. You know, it was, it was a, a good discussion, uh, amongst the committee and the not committee members. Uh, the committee members voted unanimously to support it, uh, but like I said, there was, there was, you know, there was a lot of give and take. It wasn't like it was, you know, rubber stamps. Uh, thi- this was, there were questions about in interpreting. There's a question about whether it's going to be verbatim. But the the, I think the overarching goal, Mr. President, uh, from the committee that night was to well, uh, to to have our our Spanish-speaking Hoyokers the opportunity through the SAP channel to hear what we do live. And it's going to start in a few, in a, in a meeting or two, and it's going to be with just for city council meetings for now. And, um, there's, there's no, there's no cost to the city government. It's going to become from the, um, uh, the, it's the fee from the, uh, from, from your, your Comcast bill. And, uh, and I did get an email, but I, after the fact from Scott, but I, I'm sure Counselor Murphy could speak to that when, when he could. It was Counselor Murphy's order, uh, to to do this, uh, bu- but I believe the email from Scott said that that they, that they have a budget that they, um, that that the mayor supported. Uh, lastly, there there's going to be, you know, you know, you know, we're in the Zoom world now. The hope is that at some point this year, we'll get back to room eleven. And and when, when that happens, uh, Mr. President, uh, Mr. McPherson said that there's, there's going to be an in-person interpreter in a separate room from the city council. So there are, there are hardware costs somewhere around, I wrote ten thousand dollars in my notes, but I'll stand corrected. And that there's going to be translation costs somewhere around five hundred dollars. I say, again, that's what I have in my notes um, as well. We we, you you know, good points were made by counselors, saying who's doing the translating? And, and, um, and so the the hope is that we will have Mr. McPherson reach out to the city council president to talk about exactly who's going to do this. Who for, I mean, this, Mr. McPherson mentioned something from HPS. Who would be, um, who who would be doing it? I I I don't know if that, if we'd have to have a special municipal employees type situation with a stipend. I I, you know, we we didn't get to those, those logistics, but we we did say at the time, you know, we didn't make it part of the order, but we did suggest strongly that the city council president have, have, um, input as to who's actually doing the interpretation. And and the expectation would be that this would be not your, not an employee, of course, but it would be reviewed at a, at a, at a regular rate. So with that, uh, I I think I can, we we concluded that, um, uh, based upon, based upon a franchise fee, that's what it's called. Thank you. I I couldn't, it was on news in my notes. Um, um, with with that, we concluded unanimously that that we should, uh, support this. Thank you.
Yeah, just one thing, Counselor Bartley, the late file A is from Scott with a breakdown of the cost.
I'll make a motion, take that up right now.
One second.
It's motion is to go out of order to late file A. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It says, "To attention President Todd McGee, uh, counselors below you will find a list of the costs associated with providing interpretation of city council meetings. Um, transmission encoder, eight thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. The device used for transmitting the single signal back to Comcast head end must be upgraded in order for the item to carry the secondary, uh, audio program SAP with, uh, which will carry the interpreted, uh, audio. Soft, Zoom software, four hundred. While the council continues to hold meetings virtually, this software upgrade will allow the secondary audio program to carry the interpreted, uh, interpretated audio. Interpretation, four hundred and fifty dollars per per meeting approximately. This cost is based on the following price information from interpreters. Three-hour minimum, seventy-five dollars an hour for both, uh, Spanish interpreters. Twenty-five dollars surcharge for team coordinating and pro rata after three hours at a rate of one hour. Funding for these items, uh, will come from a portion of the cable franchise fee, which cannot be spent without mayor approval. I'm in touch with the mayor about this, who voiced his support for proceeding with this fashion.
Motion receive.
Motion is receive, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Back to thirty C, Counselor McGivern, then Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, uh, like everyone, I think, believe that this has been a long time coming in that we've talked about it many, many different times over the years. And cost prohibitive was always part of it and other issues, you know, were were always, uh, were were always part of it. And I am going to encourage everybody not to take a final vote on this this evening. It's, in my own words, and I'll try to explain, not ready. Uh, in the area of cost, it's, it's, it's not clear that the entire cost is coming from Hoyok Media. It's, uh, there is no contract with Hoyok Media to pay for this. That is a hired employee by a group of people that are part of that corporation that has an agreement with the city to do what they do. They're doing a fantastic job and I support them. And I don't doubt that they could do something of this nature, but we're not ready. The city needs to enter into an agreement with them to make sure that the controls are there. The, the four hundred dollars, five hundred dollars a meeting is very expensive. And once we start this, there's no turning back. We we got to be assured that the cost is going to be covered outside of the city budget. The, the second part, which which is, I brought the question up and Counselor Bartley pointed out in committee is is, is what I call the control of the, uh, of the translation itself, the interpretation itself. Um, we, you know, is it going to be verbatim? Because many of us talk in different, uh, different ways. And what we say isn't just the words that come out of our mouth, but the way they come out of our mouth. And we're going to be sitting here and it's going to be two people sitting in the room in City Hall taking turns about what we're saying and immediately putting them into Spanish. I I'd like to know who's doing that. Their profession, their professionalism is very important because the standards of of of, uh, interpreters are something that professional interpreters are something that we need to take into consideration and should be also negotiated, uh, MOU or contract with who is doing the translation and who is hiring the people or who are they, who are they working under to do the translation? These are two key areas that I think have not been fully vetted before we jump forward into this endeavor. Very worthy endeavor. I support it. But the costs scare me, but more important, the control of who's going to, who's going to be doing the translation is important. We live in a political world and we have to be assured that the people who are doing it are both professional. The standards that have nothing to do with politics and will get the best message out in Spanish to so many residents within the city. And I just, in my opinion, it's not ready to be voted upon this evening.
Counselor Murphy, you had your hand up?
Yeah, yeah. And first of all, let me thank, uh, Counselor Bartley and the committee and, uh, you know, I respectfully would disagree with my friend, Counselor McGivern. I I think it it's, it's long overdue. Uh, the cost and right now, our current mayor, this is exactly what he said, I do authorize the purchase of whatever we need for unencumbered funds in the municipal account, as well as the cost of the interpretation services needed. Uh, so if we need to have an agreement, I would hope the mayor would put that agreement together with with Hoyok Media. I don't disagree with Counselor McGivern on that aspect. Uh, in terms of interpretation, uh, you know, we are talking with, uh, the Language Access Services at the Hoyok Public Schools. They are professional interpreters. That that is what they do. Uh, there are two people that try to make sure that, uh, what is being, uh, provided is as close to, uh, accurate in terms of, uh, translating, uh, into Spanish, so that one person's doing a half hour. So it's not someone trying to do a three-hour meeting and they're there. That's why there are two people doing it and they're taking every, every half hour trying to do something. Uh, and I don't disagree with the idea of the council president sitting down with, it's Nick Magnoli at the, at the Hoyok, uh, Language Access Services at the schools. Making sure that they are interpreters that are not coming in with a political agenda. But I think once those things are done and 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 the council president and the mayor finalize that, I think, I think we are long ready. Right now, our citizens who do not speak English, uh, well enough to listen to a council meeting and feel comfortable, they're getting an interpretation, but they're getting interpretation from someone who very well may have a bias. As opposed to a, a, a person trying to translate on the spot, uh, that I would think is just trying to do a translation for the most part. And if we find out that's not the case, I would be the first to say, let's go find another, let's go find another translator. Uh, but I think, you know, I don't know how many people will watch. But if as many people percentage-wise in the, in a Spanish population, uh, tend to watch these meetings as the people that, I'm amazed, in the English population that watch these meetings, uh, we'll, we'll start to have an outreach, uh, to the community in terms of informing them as to what's going on. Providing, uh, I think, a connection in the community in terms of what's going on. Uh, again, and and the cost, even if it's five hundred dollars, we're only talking city council meetings right now. My original order was hoping for more, but city council meetings right now, and if we did that, we're talking thirteen thousand dollars. But it, it, it is by all accounts, from the mayor, from Scott, and now anyone else that wants to check it, it appears to me that the money is available. If we need to sign a contract agreement to make sure that it stays available, I'm fine with that. But I think, uh, the council needs to say, yes, let's do it. Uh, let's get all of the necessary paperwork done and and let's get this back so that we have the ability of all of our citizens, or at least ninety-nine percent of our citizens, to be able to listen to a city council meeting in a comfortable, uh, and understanding language and become part of the united community. Thank you.
Counselor Bacon, then Counselor Hernandez. Counselor Bacon, you're on mute, Counselor.
I should just stay off mute. I'm trying to keep the background noise down, but thank you. Um, I was just going to suggest that if we find this complied with, we could also forward a request to the mayor that he enter into a written agreement of the use of the cable franchise fees that would assure us that there would be no expense on the city side. And also to document what the credentials would be for the interpreters. And then I think we'd kind of have all the i's dotted and t's crossed and we'd be good to go as long as the mayor was willing to do that. Thank you.
Counselor Hernandez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just wanted to add that, um, I also agree with Counselor Murphy that this is way, I mean, I believe that this is way overdue. Um, that in a city where fifty percent of people are Latino descent, uh, majority Puerto Ricans, um, with limited English proficiency, that we should offer these services that are only going to improve, um, understanding and communication amongst the community. Um, so they can also be part of making, um, decisions um, with well, by being well informed. And I support this, and if we're voting on it today, I I am in support of it. Um, th- this community deserves that transparency. Thank you.
Counselor Bartley?
I think Counselor Lacy had a hand up first.
Uh, uh, sorry, Counselor Lacy.
I think it was a tie, uh, but the point that I was going to make.
Female.
Thank you. Um, the only thing I wanted to note is that I'm I'm fully in support of this. We have filed this order so many different times. I've never been able to make progress on it, so I'm I'm very happy to see where it's at right now. Um, additionally, I think that Counselor Bacon actually offered, um, some, some nice ways to ensure that um, the city is not encumbering any cost, that it is coming out of the, the cable fund and um, that we have some credentials to point to. And and I do think that a written contract of sorts is important. I I don't think we want to, you know, have sort of like these handshake agreements. I think we want to point to what the expectations are and how this is going to be managed, and if there's problems, how to sort of deal with and approach them. So, um, I I'm, I'm happy that we've made this much progress and I would like to, um, see us move forward on it.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I I I agree. Um, I I think, uh, Counselor Bacon made up good suggestions. I'm I'm going to make another suggestion that we, that we condition as subject to approval the city council president. Um, I I I'm, so I'm going to make that motion right now. And then, and then, uh, I I'll go one step further. Uh, I I, I think we should as a body, um, I'm not saying we do it now because we already got a million things ahead of us, but and I don't want to do another late file and I'm not going to do another late file. But but I I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say that we ought to, we ought to consider.
Hold on, hold on, if we can mute the other lines, Counselor Bartley's got the floor.
It's not that important, really, but I I think we ought to consider also, uh, and if we, if we get the input from the clerk, that we should, you know, maybe get our agendas. You know, why don't we get our, our agendas translated? Why, why, I know I filed that order. I know I did. I did it like seven years ago. That went like absolutely nowhere, but, but, um, But, but, um, you know, I'll, I'll file the order, you know, I'll email, uh, the clerk at some point in the next week or so. And I'll see if it makes sense for, uh, you know, I know it's not in the budget now, but I'll see if that makes sense for, for consideration down the road that we have at least our city council agenda, uh, translated into, um, Spanish. And I, and I, and I'll bet, I'll bet, Mr. President, there aren't too many other communities that, that, that do that. And, you know, maybe we should, uh, maybe we should consider doing it, okay? Thank you.
Counselor Tomlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm very, uh, much in support of this, uh, and it is long overdue. And I, I know several counselors over the years have, uh, have put this forward, but, uh, the progress has been made just in the last year or so, um, towards doing this. Uh, I think it's important for the, the population of our community. I think, um, uh, my colleagues made some good points of probably putting this forward to the mayor, get a contract. And, and as long as this money is paid out of the franchise fees and we find out that the, um, the translation, the translators are appropriate for this, uh, this job, um, I, I think it, uh, it would work well for our community. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, this, uh, this order has been going around, uh, for the last twenty-two years that I've been here. Um, and I, you know, it's about time we start doing something with it. Uh, I'm, um, also, uh, intrigued because one of my, uh, questions, uh, to our administrative assistant tonight was, we have a lot of people on our screen here. I was just wondering if there's a different room that we could remove the people who are counselors? Because as, uh, I always see Todd's eyes looking around, trying to figure out where everything is. At times it gets kind of confusing where, you know, cause we, we all kind of keep moving. Um, and Jeffrey told me that until we get to the next level of Zoom, uh, whereas when we have the, the translation, that's when we, that's when he has more, uh, power to do other things. Quite frankly now, I mean, I mean, what's our liability? We can get zoom bombed right now and we have no idea it's coming. There's no way for us to present, uh, prevent it right now. Um, but that's one of the added benefits of having the translation. So it's, uh, I'm for it. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna try one more time. Um, I do support the efforts that I do support what the whole goal is here. It's, it's an all, and it is overdue, we, we know that. But it is not ready. It is not ready and, and what I'm hearing makes me even more concerned. I'm hearing we're gonna let the mayor control what the city council interpretation will be. We, we don't want the mayor controlling what we say or how it's, how it's put in Spanish for what we say in, in, in English. We're saying that the interpreters are going to be used from the school department. The school department's in receivership, the state's in control. We have no control over who, who the bodies or who the persons are going to be that's going to be, gonna be performing this duty. We need to control our destiny on this issue. We need to be in control of what we do. Not the mayor, not the schools, not Hoyok Media. Part of Hoyok Media is the media. We need to be careful. We need to put the right language in place so that we have a say over who does the work and how it's done. Not just take for granted that once we jump in, if there's a problem down in the world, we're gonna be able to correct it. Please put this back in committee and get the questions answered that I've raised.
Counselor LeBron Martinez.
I just want to remind you all that this is not a new topic. This has been going on for a lot of years. I, um, when I was at the school board, that was a, a beginning of a request that was also, um, made and we started off with, if anybody remembers Avan, uh, Avanza, which was the, uh, an opportunity where Gustavo Acosta actually ran that particular program and there were the, the, the minutes in the, uh, was translated for the, for the population, which actually, um, the school, the school guide for the translation that was not being done for our children in the school system. Thus, we lost the service. So we really got to make sure that this is tightened up at the city level because I don't think it's fair that there's certain services that are only granted for some populations and not for others. Secondly, on October, October nineteen, twenty nineteen, I filed same order that is being actually again addressed, gone through. Um, but just wanted to say and remind us that the people that I also are, you know, sitting and, um, wanting to know and learn, are also voters like everyone else and they need the same rights of listening and knowing what the status quo is saying so that they can really get involved. This question, why and why not? The criticism is not within our community, with the Latino community. And just think about was in France, was in Europe and what's happening. Um, and that things that I just want to leave us.
Glad as you're cutting out.
That whatever way we go, so I'll list, so thank you.
Hold on, Counsel Ray, Counsel LeBron Martinez, you're, you're breaking up and your screen's freezing a bit. Counselor Bacon, then Counselor Grainy.
Um, so I would just like to offer a motion that we proceed with the order as recommended by the committee, but we request of the mayor to enter into an agreement relative to the cost to, um, ensure that there will be no costs on the city side and enter into an agreement where the city council will choose the interpreter. That the president of the council will have the ability to determine who will do or and/or the full council will determine who will do the interpreting under the funding through the cable franchise fee.
Second it.
Okay, so you're looking to amend. The goal is to televise within forty-eight hours of actual meeting? And you wanted to add that language that you just said?
Yes.
Well, I'm writing that up. It was seconded Counselor Leahy was up. Actually, no, Counsel Grainy, I apologize. Counsel Grainy.
Yeah, uh, Counselor Bacon just stole my thunder. I was gonna say that the, the interpreter has to be, uh, okayed by the city council, that we have control of the, uh, the fight of the, the destiny of our, much like we do with our administrative assistant, that we have control over, uh, uh, who does the interpretation and who does the, uh, the thing. I support the initiative enthusiastically, but we need to have some control over it. Thank you.
All right, so Counsel Leahy, sorry.
Okay, I, I think that, um, all the comments that are made tonight, that everyone here is supporting this. Um, but I do like what, uh, Counsel McGivern said. Um, Counsel, uh, Counsel McGivern, did you make that a motion? If you did, I'll second that.
He did not. Are we talking about putting it back in committee?
Well, yeah, you brought us some valid points and started making me to think. Um, so if you are gonna make that as a motion, I will second that.
Make the motion back to the DGR committee.
Second.
The motion was to send back to DGNR. There was a prior motion for an amendment. Are we gonna act on that or you wanna go to the committee first?
Was the amendment?
That's up to you, Mr. President. The amendment's fine. I think it's, it goes in the direction we need to go. I think you just want to fine tweak it.
All right, so it, Counsel Bacon's amendment, which was seconded was, and I was letting people speak because I needed time to write it. Uh, at the end of forty-eight hours of actual meeting, that the mayor enter into a contract with Hoyok Media with no cost to the city and that the city council approve the interpreters. Did I get that correct, Counsel Bacon?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Second now.
On that motion, which was seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Opposed, okay. Now there's a motion to send it back to committee. It was seconded. All those in favor?
No.
All those opposed?
No.
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 I'd say the noes have it unless you want to question.
Can we actually just lay it on the table and work on the, um, can I?
Hold on, hold on, Counsel Lisi's on the floor. Counsel Lisi.
Thank you. Can we lay this item on the table so we don't lose sight of it? And, um, work on the other pieces that we want to add to it separately as, as separate orders?
You could table it. Yeah, m- motion is to, to lay on the table. That was seconded, no more debate. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Show of hands. If you're looking at the tablet, raise your hand.
Can I ask something before, cause?
Right, you can't, unfortunately.
Just go in order.
We, we have to count it. So here, show of hands, raise your hands. One, two, three, four. I only see four.
Three, five.
Uh, three, five. All right, thank you, Counsel Grainy. So that would not pass. Counsel Lisi, that did not pass. Counsel LeBron Martinez, you had a question.
I'm sorry, I stepped, I had to step away for a second and then I come back and there was something, uh, you know, being decided. So I lost what happened in between, my apology.
No, no, no problem. They were, they were looking, so there was an amendment to add, which was approved, that the mayor enter into a contract with Hoyok Media, no cost to the city, and that the city council approve the interpreters. That was approved and added. Then there was a debate to send it back to committee, that did not pass. Then there was a motion to lay on the table, that did not pass. Any further questions?
On the main motion.
The, the reason that it went back, I'm sorry. What, the reason why it went back to the committee was for what? I'm sorry.
It didn't go back, it failed, it failed to go. They, it was a, a vote to go back and that vote failed. So we're still up for debate. So now back to the original motion, which is to approve with the amendment. All those in favor, all right, which is, just so we all know and it's on the record, have considered the same recommended that the order be complied with as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The azur have it.
Can we have a raise of hand?
Well, I didn't hear any no's, so we'd go with, yeah, all right. So we're now on two. There was no charter and rules, there was no joint committee motions, orders, resolutions. First one is from Counsel Murphy, or that the city consider purchasing any replacement vehicles. It reaches out to the state to see if it could be eligible for significant rebates of purchasing electric vehicles.
Todd, if you could, um, just if, if it's going to committee, you just have to go to committee.
Yep, so Counsel Murphy, what committee?
Yeah, Finance Committee. And just to real quick, I just want to thank, I had, uh, two things. Now, I want to thank Representative Duffy and her administrative assistant, our fellow counselor, to give me, grab me this information from the state. And also one of our constituents, Sharon Farmer, who told me that we actually can be eligible for almost, uh, getting electric vehicles almost for free with certain grants that we can get and that we should apply for. So, uh, I just think we need to move on this and I know we're getting other vehicles that probably can't be, but, we need to get in this line because at some point we're gonna be told we can't use our vehicles. Thank you.
So that's to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thirty-four is from Counsel Sullivan, or that in accordance, master law, chapter fifty-nine, section thirty-eight H, the city council approve and ratify the agreement between Bass LLC, uh, Pilot. So to DGNR, Counsel Sullivan? You're on mute, Counselor. It's on mute.
On mute. You're muted.
Hit the space, space bar. Again.
Yeah, you're there.
Yeah, so, uh, either, I, I was gonna say Finance or DGNR, whichever.
Finance, okay, nope. All right, so to Finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-six from Counsel Sullivan. Uh, the city of Hoyok, through the honorable counsel and honorable mayor petition the master general court to enact legislation to amend the requirements of a special election on mayor vacancy in twenty-twenty-one in the city of Hoyok and that the signed legislation be entitled, enacted related to the office of mayor in the city of Hoyok. And then it goes through its sections. Uh, Counsel Sullivan.
Most of you want to suspend the rules and take up thirty-nine and fifty-five together?
Second that.
Thirty, thirty-seven?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven? Thirty-nine?
Thirty-nine. And what was the last one?
Fifty-five, yeah.
Fifty-five. Most suspend rules, take up a package, which would be, I'm in order, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-nine, fifty-five. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I read you thirty-six, thirty-seven is the home rule petition from Counsel Sullivan. Um, whereas February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one, mayor was appointed to, uh, select board of town of Providence to serve as a town manager. Whereas the city charter states that if there's a vacancy in the office more than six months, uh, the city council shall call meeting for a new election. Whereas the current mayor has resigned honor before, uh, June thirtieth, the city charter would require a special election. Whereas organizing and executing multiple municipal actions in a city would place a large financial burden on the city in a fiscal constraint, ongoing, uh, health of the, due to COVID. Um, order that petition to the general court, uh, by a bill of special law related to the city be filed, uh, attest to hereby approved, uh, clause one, section eight, article two amended and adopted. Um, and therefore, in essence, you're calling to not fill the special election. Um, thirty-nine is from Counsel Bacon. Or that in accordance with section six of the charter, uh, the city council call for a special election upon the vacancy of the mayor, for his position of mayor, language taken, uh, from the charter as read. Fifty-five is from Counsel McGivern and Counsel Sullivan, order that the city of Hoyok, through the honorable city council mayor, petition the general court to enact legislation to amend the requirement to a special upon a memorial vacancy for the twenty-twenty-one in the city of Hoyok as, as read here, which was the prior one. So I'll go back to thirty-six. What would you like to do with the package?
Make a motion to refer the orders to the Charter and Rules Committee.
Motion is refer all to Charter and Rules.
Yeah, and I got.
Counsel Sullivan, go ahead.
Yeah, thirty-six, I, I, thirty-six and thirty-seven, I'd like to make a motion to receive and adopt.
Second.
So Counsel Sullivan would like his orders thirty-six and thirty-seven to receive and adopt. Under discussion, Counselor Sullivan.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've got a, uh, uh, so we, we got a regularly scheduled election in the fall, all right? Um, a- as we all know, running special elections right now, that's gonna cost the city a hundred thousand dollars, somewhere in that neighborhood. Um, and, you know, we've got a, we're, we've still got this pandemic going on. We, we, we're, we're under a time gun here. I've already met with, um, Senator Vellus and I've spoke with Rep Duffy. They're ready to expedite this and, uh, they're both fully in support of it. It's exactly what the cities of Boston and Lawrence have already done. And I think we really, we, we send this to committee, we're gonna delay this at least two weeks to a month. It, it's something we, we'd still have to get through the, uh, legislature. We, we have no control over how fast. I've been assured by both our, our, our senator and our rep that they, they would do everything in their powers to expedite it. But we have no control over it and we ought to get this off to Boston as soon as possible.
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I want to clarify that my purpose in filing item thirty-nine was because when I became aware that the mayor had accepted a new position, I just turned to the charter to look at the language. And subsequent to that, I learned that it is totally legal, um, to pursue another path outside of the charter, should the council find that to be in the better interest of the city. And then tonight I was able to clarify, um, through my point of order question, that it was also in order to seek the approval prior to knowing the exact date, which I was not sure of. So because of the other information I've learned since I filed my order, um, I feel very comfortable supporting the initiative that's put forth by Counselors McGivern and Counselor Sullivan relative to being proactive on this. Um, and also. Um, and also in the interest of clarity for our election and in the interest of the financial costs that we would incur. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I, I think we all concur on what Council Vacan, Council Sullivan and everyone has said to to uh to, to date so far. Um, the reason I, I'm asking for committee is there are two issues that are not addressed in the language used by Boston in, in issuing of the, you know, not having a special election is something we need to do immediately. And, and having a, the November election serve the same purpose. The two issues that are not addressed are, one is what I would propose is that whoever wins the November election would take over after the appeal period and not have to wait until January. Not a big deal, but I think it's, I think it's important that we address that before the language goes to Boston. More important, um, you know, nineteen ninety-two was the last time we had the uh the president of the city council take over and become the acting mayor. In nineteen ninety-two, that person served, continued to serve as president of the city council, run the meetings, vote, and also served as acting mayor. That person was only allowed to have one salary, which makes sense. And it was a five and a half month period, you know, set and done after a special election, which included a primary. Now, the reason I, I say all that is because the, the charter is, is what we look for, but the charter is silent to some parts of the the president and, and the term as to what happens afterwards. A charter is a covenant with a community to have local government. The covenant is with the state. So the charter itself links us, keeps us unique by our charter, but links us directly to Master General Law. Master General Law has changed since nineteen ninety-two, and there's some language in Master General Law that the city solicitor has been researching this week, and we need to pay close attention to it. Unlike in nineteen ninety-two, when the president of the city council did both jobs, there is some language that may contradict that, that would force the president of the city council to step down as a city councillor and force the city council to fill the position because there's more than six months left in the term. I don't believe that's correct, nor do I believe that's something that we want. And I've, I've suggested to the city solicitor that we could include in our home rule petition, petition language as to what we want if we're in agreement, because I think that's important. I think anyone who's elected to the city council, even as we appoint that person to be president, is not asking to give up their duties to their constituents in their particular capacity as a councillor, but more so to be willing to do both duties during a transition period of time as so eloquently our president expressed during the president's report this evening. So I'm looking for some additional language to the language that Boston used. And that's why I'm suggesting we could get it into the Charter and Rules Committee and if with some cooperation, get it back out in two weeks.
Counselor Lacy, then Counselor Sullivan.
Uh, just very briefly, I just want to say I've been hearing from constituents, um and they're hitting every single point in why we should actually be um foregoing the special election and going only with the general election. So people are bringing up the cost-saving measures. People are uh bringing up the fact that we're on the cusp of, you know, um, you know, vaccinating so that we don't have to worry about um COVID spread, uh despite the fact that all the protocols, it seems to be uh adopted for um all elections moving forward uh in terms of the safety, the safety and sanitation procedures for our elections. Um, and then, you know, I think special elections just become confusing for people. Um, and if we were having a, a special election, it would probably be um June or July um at this rate, and we know that um people are not really tuned in, paying attention or even um around, especially following uh the pande- pandemic. I think if people um have a chance to get away, they, they may very well in fact be away. This is what I'm hearing from folks all over the city. There's um broad support for foregoing the special. Um, I think there's some interesting points that were raised by Council McGivern, um but um o- overall, I'll be vote, voting in support of the um special legislation.
Counselor Sullivan, then Counselor Tomlin.
So I, I would be willing right now to a- amend it to include the language that Council McGivern, McGivern would want right now uh uh as far as us having uh the option not to have the president uh relinquish his position as a councillor and just put that in there right now and get it over with. But, and then as far as the um, the November uh takeover, I, I think we've got plenty of time to address that ourselves. Um, and that doesn't have to go along with this bill. Uh, we don't have to worry about that till then. The important thing now is to get by the timeframe within which we'd be forced to have a special election.
I would second that.
Okay, so what, what was, Council Sullivan, what was the motion? That was just seconded.
That, that we, and um i- if you're willing to go along, Council McGivern, if you, if you could give the exact wording you'd want to have in there to, to amend it uh for what we sent to the uh, to the legislature.
Mr. President, I, I'd be happy to answer that, but my motion to go to committee is because I don't have the exact wording at this point in time. Just the concept of what we want to do, the city solicitor was unable to uh, to, at a short notice, unable to get that wording this afternoon. That's why I'm asking to give us a period of time to make sure the wording is correct.
Alright, so, hold on to that. Counselor Tomlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Council McGivern. I think there's, this is a unique situation and uh we're not a Boston or a Lawrence and the points he makes are, are valid about uh, you know, having uh the possible elected mayor in November to start within uh after the appeal period. And um, you know, I, I think it makes a lot of sense to send this committee. I think we have enough timeframe for this to happen. Um, and uh, I, I think uh you know, the, the hundred thou- the, the money that's being saved, I think is, is, is important, you know, to get this to the legislature, but I, I believe there's enough time and I think um, you know, getting the um, you know, the law department in there to get the proper wording um uh will be, you know, doing our due diligence for this uh, this item. Thank you.
Then, Counselor Sullivan?
I, w- we don't know what the timeframe is. We could be notified tomorrow that it's in two weeks. We have no clue as to what the timeframe is. We, we need, we, we need to take action on this.
Just so everyone knows, Crystal has her hand up.
Motion to suspend, allow it.
Motion to suspend the rules, allow legal to answer. Crystal?
So I'm sure you can all imagine, there's been a lot of research happening behind the scenes almost immediately. Thankfully, we have a couple of municipalities that have done this recently as well. Um our charter is essentially what's going to uh guide us here. However, because we're doing a special act, we can tailor that to what explicitly we want to do moving forward. And I think that's the best course of action here. Um, because otherwise, we're leaving everything up to a lot of interpretation. Whereas if we tell the state, this is exactly the p- process we want to happen, then that's what they're going to grant for us. And the way we currently have it written, as I think a lot of you should have received that initial draft, um, this is only going to be for two thousand twenty-one. When there's a vacancy for mayor for two thousand twenty-one, this is not going to change our charter going forward. So it's going to be a one-time process. So I think our best course of action here, should we choose to forego the special election, which currently is required in our charter, is to just be very explicit, whether we want the um elected mayor to take office in November, whether we want the presidential seat or ward seat that uh councillor McGee is currently holding to be vacated. That needs to be explicit. If he's able to go back to his seat, we should specify that. Um, so I think there's a lot of drafting here to do and I don't think uh trying to amend it tonight on the floor makes sense. I think a, a meeting of the minds of the committee to sit and draft, um we can certainly do a screen share and draft on the spot so that it's done in such a way that everybody wants it to be done. Um, but that seems to be the consensus. We've been in contact with the state um elections department um to discuss their thoughts and they were also stating how Lawrence and Boston went about it. Basically just saying, this is our procedure. This is what we want to happen. This is the timeline. This is how this is going to look. So that would be my advice going forward. Um, and then just everybody drafting what exactly we want to happen.
Counselor Murphy was next, then Counselor Sullivan.
Yeah, just a question. So if we send this to committee and the mayor resigns in the next week, uh, at that point, does the, the charter at that point become what we need to act on? Uh, since we would not have any special legislation at that point, or can we be in a position to still get the special uh legislation passed a- and not be required to have a, a special election? And, and the other question I would have is for, is for our city clerk, eh, special election, is that one hundred and twenty days for the resignation? Would you know? If I could ask the city clerk?
Yep, so.
I'm not, I think it's up to the city council to call the election date once the resignation's been placed. But then the charter also speaks to um the nomination papers have to be eight, eight weeks prior to the preliminary and the preliminary has to be eight weeks prior to the um, the special election. So you're, you're talking a good you know, fourteen, fifteen weeks before everything can happen from the time the special election's called until the actual special election happens. Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
But there's an appeal period, right, Bren, Brenna?
Appeal period for?
After the election.
Um.
After the general.
You mean for a recount?
Yeah, I'm not unders- I'm not sure what you mean.
Possible recount or a possible appeal. It's like when November, you don't take over till January. The special, it's two to three weeks before you think the, the new person takes over.
Oh, I'm not sure about that. I'll have to look further into that.
Okay, so.
Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, so just, again, just, do we know if we put this in committee and is the mayor resigned in the next week? Uh, are we then required to have the council select, or selected dates that Council Vacan was going to do? Or can we still go to the state legislature and ask for special permission and not set a, a primary?
That's to, to Crystal. Crystal, you have the floor.
Search that. Um, so part of the process would obviously start, but we would still have time to get something to the state before all things are set in motion. So the president, the council president would sit in as acting while we're waiting to hear from the state. But I don't think it's going to take long, at least given the precedent from these other municipalities, for that legislation to pass through. Um, so I think while we're working to pass that special act, the president would sit um as acting and we would just sort of maintain status quo until we've heard otherwise. But I, I don't think it would be prudent to set everything in motion on an, on the exact day that a resignation is solidified.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Sullivan? You had, you're, okay. So thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-nine and fifty-five to charter rules, was that the consensus? Or that was the motion, I really should say. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Let me get back in order here. Item thirty-eight was from Council Vacan, in the interest of those uh that we serve, each department head, including appointed elected, post a schedule of days and hours they are currently present at city hall until such time as city hall opens.
Um, I'd like to receive and adopt this and send it to each department head to be posted and with the schedule returned to the city council in two weeks at our next meeting, please.
Motion is to receive, adopt with a copy to all department heads in a reply back to the full city council?
Yes, and to be posted up on the website for the public.
And post on the website.
Yes, please.
Is there a second to that?
I already seconded, yep.
I, I didn't hear it. Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Forty. Uh, from Council Bartley, that the DPW superintendent sent a communication to the city council for its three sixteen meeting to provide a schedule or estimate timetable for paving projects, patching, patch hole, uh potholes, striping lines, um, uh parking spaces, operation hours for weekly bulk waste drop-off operations, hours and days, uh, which was discussed in Finance, refer to DPW and a copy to Public Safety.
I'm old.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Forty-one from Council Bartley, that the DPW and O'Rourke coordinate cleanup uh behind Fitzpatrick's ice rink in coordination with the former at-large Dan Bresnan. The rink manager is offering to help as I received the following email, once the snow is gone, we'll be cleaning up the trash as best as we uh, we can near the rink. If the city can help, uh on top of the hill, that would be great. Refer to DPW, copy to Public Safety.
Promote.
All those in favor?
Second.
Aye.
Opposed? Forty-two from Council Lacy, order that resident-only permit parking area be created in front of forty-five dash fifty-two Canal Street. Uh, residents have a hard time dealing with parking bans on both odds and then occupying the same side of the street.
Receive and send to ordinance.
Mr. President, just as a point of order, that requires a petition from the residents at this point, similar to speed humps?
Okay. So that would go to ordinance waiting up petition. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Forty-three. From Council Lacy, order that the city council vote to place the following question on the ballot as a binding referendum. Should the city treasurer be changed from elected position to an appointed position and combine the duties of treasurer and tax collector?
Receive and adopt.
Is there a second?
Most refer charter and rules, second.
For the charter and rules, all those in favor?
Aye.
is from myself, that a handicap sign be placed at six Highland Ave. Send it to ordinance with a copy.
Copy to disabilities.
With copy to commission, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Forty-six.
As if I can make a motion to suspend the rules.
Yes.
To take up items forty-six, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-six and fifty-seven as a package and refer to the committee on Finance.
Second.
Second.
Let me check, I'm off. Forty-six, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-six,
That's it.
He's got them all. This president? Yeah, Council Grady, while I.
Uh, request, uh, requested abbreviated reading of these.
You betcha.
Second.
So, forty-six, since we're taking all as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? From Council McGivern, a hundred and forty thousand is appropriate to pay costs of Hoyoke Police Department for cruisers, payments of all costs, incentive. So it's a cruiser issue. Fifty-one is a transfer from parking control officer, thirty thousand, waste recycle coordinator, forty-five hundred to vehicles and repairs. Fifty-two is eight hundred and five dollars from supplies to overtime. Fifty-three is refuge H M E O, ten thousand, two temporary seasonal. Fifty-four is thirty-five hundred from forestry services, snow removal services to snow removal services, thirty-seven thousand, seven fifty. Fifty-six is three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars, be authorized for, for computer services, software's licenses. Fifty-seven is eleven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars from highway bridges, demo worker, two uh maintenance overtime. All to Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Back to forty-seven and forty-eight, suspend rules, take up as a package.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Forty-seven is four thousand, one hundred eighty-six dollars and thirty-six cents to injured on duty. That's fire. That's firefighters. Uh, forty-eight is thirteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-nine cents from Lieutenant and Patrolman Two, injured on duty. Um, for fire, firefighters. Two. For police. Five. Motion to be received at the first reading, under discussion, Councillor McGivern.
Uh, just real quick, we do this just about every meeting to account for an, a safety individual, police officer that's injured on duty, same salary, but taken out of the salary line item to keep track of the fact you're paying them while they're injured on duty.
So motion is passed at first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to be to pass the second reading, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are approving those transfers.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Greeny?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez? Leacy? McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
We hear vote, you approve forty-seven and forty-eight. Uh, next would be late files. We are on B.
So President, could you just remind us what A was?
A was the communication from Hoyok Media regarding costs.
Thank you.
You're welcome. B is a poll location from HG and E.
Make a motion to have a hearing.
So is C and D and E.
We take those as a package and send that to, uh, committee to have a hearing.
So motion is take up B, C, D, and E as a package, as poll locations for HG and E. And motion be receive and table to set up a public hearing, is that how we do it?
Yep.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? F is, this is from the mayor, it's a communication. I'm appointing, uh, Ms. Chakowski as the Acting Treasurer effective March first, twenty twenty-one. She will assume responsibility as City Treasurer. Um, the compensation listed below, I, the appointment shall remain in place until the City Council has elected a City Treasurer to fill the vacancy. Ms. Chakowski will return back to the position of tax collector at that time. Yeah, so go ahead, Councillor A.
Yeah, so, um, so I looked into this this past week. We only had one person to apply, and that was Ms. Chakowski.
Right.
Um, so how, how do you want to go about handling this?
All right, well, G, the, so that was F. G, we can take up as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, please be advised that, uh, Ms. Haslam will be doing the Acting Tax Collector effective March first, coincide with Ms. Chakowski. Ms. Haslam, so assume the responsibility, her salary be as posted. The appointments are remaining in place until the City Council elects, um, to fill the treasurer, which Ms. Chakowski will return back to the collector. Ms. Haslam will return to Senior Deputy Tax Collector.
And I have every faith, Ms. Ha- she's been there for a long time. I think it's a fantastic fit. So should we, should we have our, uh, Personnel Director maybe put it in Indeed, maybe put it into Monster? Uh, how should we go?
I mean, if they're gonna start March first, so they started, I guess we can send it to committee to see how we want to appoint. If we leave it as is, then we just go forward to a hire for senior Senior Deputy Tax Collector, I think, if that's how they're doing it. So want to send it to public service and then try and vet that issue?
Okay, yep. So, uh, so make motions in the public service.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that's F and G, both are going over.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. H is from, um, the mayor as well. Please be advised, I am appointing Attorney Crystal Barnes as Acting City, uh, Solicitor effective retroactive Monday, October twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen. Upon the resignation of the former Paul Pear, Ms. Barnes has and shall continue to assume the responsibility of City Solicitor until a new appointment has been made. Compensation shall be, uh, as follows. Salary was sixty-five thousand nine seventy-five. That was for two thousand nine, two thousand twenty, or sorry, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, and then for fiscal year twenty-one, uh, seventy-five thousand eight twenty-three. The appointment shall remain in place until the mayor has appointed a City Solicitor to fill the vacancy.
Councillor President, uh, can you just back up a second?
Yep.
That, that's October?
Uh, October twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen, which is what she was appointed to back then as Acting City Solicitor.
So I, I guess what, what, what is that communication? What's the layfall asking for?
Right.
This is a telling you what the salaries were at that time, which then there'll be a late file because there's a shortfall in what she was being paid. She was doing the job, but she wasn't being paid. So we had to put the communication in order.
Okay, that, that wasn't clear to me.
Yep. I, that, that'll be several down. There were a lot of late files. So I can say we're gonna receive this and send it to Finance because there'll be an order for the next one.
We do the other one as well, as a package?
Uh, yeah, let me find it.
I think there's like three or four that go along with this.
All right, so I make a motion that the three or four gets sent to Finance's.
Right, you're there. So that'd be K, L, and M. So take up A, H, K, L, and M as a package. All those in favor? All opposed? So H, I just read to you. K is Special Counsel, five thousand nine, nine, five thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars to City Solicitor. L is five thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars to City Solicitor. M is five thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars to City Solicitor. Refer all to Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
God, I think there might be one more.
Okay.
As you're doing, I see one, uh, I see one, uh, yawning over there, wanting to get.
I, I, I'm trying to get us done before twelve, that was my goal.
Those last ones, we could have interlaid if I did.
Mentiras.
The I don't see another one for that. I have, uh, unless I'm misreading, hold on. I have one, so O is hereby appropriate nineteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars as follows. Funds are available to transfer per, it doesn't say where it's going.
But who's it from?
This is from the City Solicitor, Assistant Solicitor to City Solicitor, nineteen thousand five. Right, so. Yep.
Mr. President, can you just clarify, was H appointing Attorney Barnes to City Solicitor from acting?
Uh, let me pull that back up, give me one second, I gotta go.
Because that's the only thing that would make sense.
Crystal has her hand up.
Go ahead, Crystal.
I can clarify, so the auditor can't pay for acting out of grade without an official appointment. So the appointment letter was necessary. The problem is the ordinance would have appointed me as being the most senior solicitor in the office. It would have appointed me at the time Paul left, so it had to be a retroactive appointment. And so that's the only way the auditor could process the payments.
For what?
So it's a, it's an appointment as an acting position in order to be paid for acting out of grade.
Right, so O would be with regards to as well, send that to Finance?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Back to J. Um, this is, uh, from, uh, Jeffrey Anderson Burgos, Hoyok two thousand eighteen MVP request for a meeting. Um. Jeff, what's this for? This is from, it was a email from Jeffrey.
Maybe it was.
It's a communication, what was it?
Who's the clerk that wants to meet with us?
This is, uh, from Yanni, um, Dear Senator Villas and Duffy, Aravega.
I asked you, what are you doing?
Hold up.
So make a motion, send to public service.
All right, send J to public service, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I have N next. This is from Councillor McGivern, four thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars to Highway Bridges, uh, from Highway Bridges Demo Worker Two, uh, Vacation Buybacks and Recycling Longevity. Send that to Finance.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Last one is, we have P, which was to DG and R on Mayor Vista. Q is a late file from Councillor Leacy. Councillor McGee ordered that the ordinance committee review and potentially amend residency requirements per the Personnel Director's report slash letter.
Thank you.
All those in favor? I gotta go to ordinance, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have nothing else. If I miss something.
Motion adjourned.
I tried.
Well, second that.
All right, motion to adjourn. Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful night.
Have a good evening.
Have a good night.
All opposed? Good night.
Good night.
Take care, be safe.
Good night.